Public comment? No public comment? Nope. No public comment. Vice Chair Lewis, you have a motion for the consent calendar, please.
Yes, I do. I move a passage of the consent calendar with the following poll, and that is 3.3A by Commissioner Anderson.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Lewis and seconded by Commissioner Cook to approve the consent calendar with the poll of 3.3A by Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion?
If I might just mention the two things that are left on the consent calendar are the minutes from the February 26 meeting, and then under Resolutions 3.3B is the approval of addition of two full-time housing stability case managers for homeless rental assistance program.
Thank you. Okay, no other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. So we are to the public hearing then, right? Okay, recorder, please read the announcement.
The Housing Authority of the City of Salem will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding an exemption from the competitive bidding process and authorization of an alternative contracting method for a class of public improvement contracts. The hearing will be conducted with the staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time is expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Okay, do we staff report? We have a staff report. Andy?
Yes, you do, thank you. This is the Local Contract Review Board for the purpose of the construction manager, general manager, contractor, CMGC. This is to provide affordable housing in Salem desired of the past years. Currently, the Housing Authority and the Salem Housing, SHA, is working on a new affordable project properties at 407-5 and 4107 Fisher Road in Salem, Oregon. The Housing Authority, in cooperation with the Salem Urban Renewal Rule Agency, is working to purchase the two properties. The 401, the 4107 Fisher Road contains a substantially completed unit of 18 suites. The building is 80 percent complete, with second and third floors roughed in and condition, ready for finished work. The elevator shaft in place, but requires installation of the elevator car. Mechanicals, SHA plans to complete and finish the units, converting them into 34 single occupancy units and one bedroom unit. An exemption to the competitive bidding requirements set forth that Oregon Revised Statute, ORS Chapter 279 and SHA's Public Contracting Rules is necessary for these projects to proceed. An exemption is needed to allow SHA to utilize the expertise of a CMGC during the design stages of each project to gain as much efficiency as possible in both cost and amenities. The CMGC would be selected competitively via a Proposals RFP. The acquisition properties will be completed before any construction activities occur. The public improvement contracts to be awarded for the renovations comprise a limit and distinct class of such public improvement contracts. ORS 279.335 and SHA Public Contracting Rules 9.7 allow an identified class of public improvement contracts to be exempt from the competitive bidding process.
Okay. Question? There is nobody signed up for testimony here, so we go to questions of staff? Have questions for staff? Nope, anyone? Okay, I would say, I guess, for the public here, that this is the same kind of system we're working for the police facility with a construction manager slash general contractor concept. It seems to be working very well and efficiently. I think it really does smooth the process out, having those two people, those skill levels involved in actually every segment of the operation, including the design. So it should save money, and that's the theory we're operating here, to save money as we go through this process. Okay, so I close this hearing. And Commissioner Lewis, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Lewis, seconded by Commissioner Hoy to accept the staff recommendation. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. We are now to. Special orders of business. Commissioner Anderson, you have a motion.
I certainly do. I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Kaser to move the staff recommendation item 3.3A to your motion.
Thank you. I really pulled this, I'm fully in support of it, but I pulled it so we could have Director Wilch just have an opportunity to explain to the council and, more importantly, to the general public here tonight and those thousands of people watching on CCTV that we are in actuality doing what we can to take care of, what we can do about low-income housing. Now, I'm not talking about affordable housing, I'm talking about low-income housing for people who are not yet homeless, but could be there, the near homeless. So I'd appreciate it, Director Wilch, if you could just expand a little bit upon what is being done here, both in terms of applying for discredit, and then what Salem Housing Authority has done in the critical area of low-income housing. Thank you.
Thank you. The Commissioners have been the guide pushing us through the RAD rental assistance program, which by, we can improve our public housing through the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. And so, most of our public housing units, we have multifamily, and we also have scattered throughout the city, are not in the greatest, some are better than others, let's put it that way. And so, we applied as an agency to be able to better our housing for our clients, and that's really what it comes out to. The 9 percent tax credits, that is a federal program, and really, our ability to fix our units in the way that we want our clients to have, then we have to apply for these tax credits, which we're hoping to do, and look forward to the project when we get the money out of the tax credit. And then we go from there, and our clients will have better, more new spacious in many ways for units for better going into their future.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Andy, I have one. It says here they're going to go from public housing to Section 8 project-based funding. Can you explain what that means?
It's just a transfer of a subsidy. Right now, they have a public housing subsidy, and when they go through the RAD, they use, they transfer into a different subsidy. It's still HUD funds. It's a little different between the two, but nothing that's really, will affect our clients.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion before us to accept the staff recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Got an information report here? Got anything you want to talk about in that, Andy?
I do, yes, thank you. I'm pleased to announce, though it might be out there somewhere, that we were working with the Salem Hospital while we were working with the 4107 property, trying to find some ways where we could partner with the Salem Hospital. Time ran away, we had to get our application done for, in order to renovate the 4107 property. But we came back to this after the application, and the hospital was ready, and we were ready. And so, we have an agreement that will place six units of respite beds in the 4107. And what that does, it's really the same clients that the hospital is solving for, if you will. They get a lot of folks that are homeless who come through and don't have any place to go on the, when they come out of the hospital, if they have a burn or, you know, problems, that they can now, based on this agreement, we can, they can come over and stay for some period of time until they're healed. And we're really excited about that. It does bring some additional resources in to the property itself. Not all of the deals, not all of the components are fleshed out completely, but the monetary piece is, and we'll work on the building and getting it ready to go very soon.
Great. Andy's referring to the project on Fisher Road.
I'm sorry, yes. One last thing, if you read HUD all the time, is an omnibus bill. And what it looks like is at least 10 percent across the board, some more, some less, I'm just weighing them out, but about 10 percent more resources coming from HUD next year. Whereas, we thought we were going to be 15, 20 short before. So that's a really good turnaround, and we don't know, like I said, we don't know exactly which programs are going to be the programs that get the most money, but what I see is a really good start and opportunity.
Great, that's good news. Okay, any other business to come before us? Hearing none, I call this Housing Authority of the City of Salem adjourned.
The City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Port member Kaser?
Present.
Port member Anderson?
Also.
Port member Nanki?
Here.
Port member McCoy?
Here.
Port member Asik?
Here.
Port member Hoy?
Here.
Port member Cook?
Here.
Port member Lewis?
Here.
And Chair Bennett?
Here. Alrighty. Do we have any additions or deletions, Counselor McCoy?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone have public comment? Have no one signed up for public comment to the Urban Renewal Agency? Anyone want to speak? Okay, thank you. The consent calendar.
Okay. I move approval of the consent calendar with the following poll, 4.3A by Counselor Anderson.
Second.
Second by Hoy. Do you want to go over any of it?
Well, that just leaves the minutes of the March 12, 2018 Urban Renewal Agency meeting and the consent calendar.
Counselor Anderson, you want to correct those? Okay?
I think they're all right. I've only scanned them, I haven't.
I thought, it was a test, I just wanted to see. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, we are going to take a look at 4.3A. Counselor?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Second by?
Everybody.
We'll let Asik have it. Okay, go ahead then, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As with the Urban Renewal, excuse me, the Salem Housing Authority motion that I pulled, this is another one that I would just like to have all in favor, but I'd just like a little bit more to be explained to the public about what's going on here. And Director Rutherford and I had a conversation and several email exchanges today where she answered my questions, and so I'm going to ask her about the same questions and hope she can answer them. I know she can. My first question is, how much, well, first question is, who are these folks, the three people that, or the three entities that we're giving the $300,000 grants to?
Good evening, Kristen Rutherford, Urban Development Director. So we have before you this evening a resolution to move funding from unallocated to our grant program. So this is not the exceptions as we've brought forward in the past, this is not actually approving the grants, this is just moving the funds from one budget item to another. The, we have three applicants in the pipeline right now that we cannot award funding to without making this transfer. So those entities are Ochoa's Queseria, they're a company out of Albany that is looking to relocate to Salem and build a cheese manufacturing facility and a tasting room with a little bit of retail space. CNTM Electric, which currently owns property in the urban renewal area, and they want to build some new industrial flex space, which they will be leasing out. And then Jet Industries, which has run a business in the urban renewal area for a number of years, they're in the heating and cooling and sprinkling business, and they plan to expand.
So we have one new business and two expansions in this area, which is a very good thing.
Correct.
That was more of a rhetorical question or statement than, the reason, I also was curious about the $300,000, because we know from past urban renewal situations that this is money, up to $300,000 of grants that we rightfully so have given you the authority to make. And so, I think you answered the question, the reason these are coming to us is we need to transfer money in order for you to have the funds available. And then, I know that your report indicates that in this district, the grants that we have given have leveraged a whole lot more in private funds and investment in the North Gateway Urban Renewal Project area. So perhaps you could tell the public that, too. How much have we given in grants, and how much private investment has that generated?
Sure. We made a change in the grant program in this urban renewal area, oh, two and a half to three years ago, to make that limit that said the director's discretion increased that up to $300,000. And since we made that change, it really has stimulated a lot of new investment in the area. Since 2015 to 2016, we've had about $3.4 million in grants that we have provided to businesses in that area of town, and that has leveraged about $16.6 million of private investment.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Director Rutherford, could you tell us a little bit more about Ochoa Queseria? Are they award-winning? Are they? Yeah, we just really would be interested to know about this unique company. In terms of whether or not they're award-winning, I don't know. I don't know. I do know that they produce a few different types of cheese, and that they sell retail, and that they also, I believe, sell to the restaurant industry as well, and that they have been in business for quite a while in the Albany area, and have a very viable, solid business, and are looking to grow and expand, and they want to do it in Salem.
Did you get your question answered?
I have not gotten a sample.
Any other questions, then? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. I don't see any further business for the Urban Renewal Agency, so it is adjourned. Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for March 26 to order, if the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Kaser?
Present.
Counselor Anderson?
Present.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor McCoy?
Here.
Counselor Asik?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Cook?
Here.
Counselor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett?
Here. Okay. Additions or deletions, Counselor?
Have no additions or deletions.
Okay. Any council comments? Alrighty. Mr. Manager?
Two quick items. First, a reminder that the mayor's state of the city will be Wednesday, March 28, at noon at the Salem Convention Center. Those who are, those who are physically unable to make it to the convention center, we will be live streaming the speech, the presentation, on the Facebook page of the city, on CCTV YouTube channel, and it'll also be available for later viewing. This event is co-hosted by the city, Salem City Club, the Rotary Club of Salem, and the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce. Also, if I could take a minute to call up Chief Niblock to introduce to council and the public the city's new emergency manager. Who is better dressed than?
Mayor and Counselors, Mike Niblock, Fire Chief, and it's my pleasure to introduce to you our new citywide emergency manager, Gregory Walsh. He comes to us with a lot of real rural experience, and he is a certified emergency manager and also a nationally certified public affairs officer. So we're really excited to have him here, he's starting week number two. So this is his first council meeting of many more to come, I'm sure, so we're excited to have him and looking forward to him getting to know all the people in the city and helps along with our emergency management.
Craig will be replacing the irreplaceable Roger Stevenson.
Roger Stevenson, yes, is on his way to California, so.
Welcome. Okay. I've got a few proclamations, so I'm going to ask Jan Stachewski, the city's urban forester, and Cassia Quillanen, the Chair of the Parks Board, to join me. Whereas, the city of Salem is one of only 17 cities in the country to have been a charter participant in the Tree City USA program since 1976, and the first city in Oregon to receive a Tree City USA 42nd Year Award from the Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas, for the 42nd consecutive year, the city of Salem has met the requirements for Tree City USA due to its urban forestry program, supported by a minimum dollar per capita of public funds, tree ordinance, and formal Arbor Week activities. And whereas, the city of Salem is also a sterling city with 12 Tree City USA Growth Awards in recognition of the city exceeding the goals established by the Arbor Day Foundation, now therefore I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, to hereby proclaim the period of April 2 through 8, 2018, as Salem's Arbor Week, and encourage all people of Salem to participate in community school and private observances of Arbor Week during this week, this 26th day of March 2018. Congratulations, thank you very much. Do you guys want to? Jan and Cassia?
Of course you do.
Sure. Pop trees?
Pop trees.
Pop tree.
Some time ago, I wound up on the cover of Salem Weekly as the person who speaks for trees. Now, I don't know that I actually speak for trees, but I know that we have planted quite a few of them in Salem this year. I believe we planted 600 major trees and about 3,000 seedlings, and I'd like to acknowledge that Salem Parks and Rec Board has been very much behind the tree planting effort. And in particular, our own Patricia Farrell has headed up the tree planting at McKay Park and at Minto Brown, and there have been any numbers of volunteer tree plantings in conjunction with Friends of Trees. And it's been quite a success, and if anybody hasn't done it, it's great fun to put on your wellies and go out and dig holes in the mud and plant trees. It's really much more fun than sitting around here. So in any event, you know, take an opportunity to plant a tree somewhere that you have space, it really will help the environment overall, and it makes us a beautiful place to live.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
There you are.
Could I just say, on April the 7th, along these lines, out in Ward 6 at Weathers Park, 9 o'clock, Friends of Trees will be planting there in the park. I'd invite everybody to come out, 9 to 1, April the 7th, it's a great time, like Cassia said, I'll be there, and look forward to planting some trees in Weathers Park.
Great, thank you very much. Okay. The next one is the Wyland Mayor's Water Conservation Challenge Month, which will be April, and receiving the proclamation is Ron Kraus from the Marion Soil and Water Conservation District's Education. He is the outreach coordinator for the Marion Soil and Water Conservation. Also have city staff here, Deborah Topp, Lacy Gor's Priest, and Brandon Kropaski. Come on down. You betcha, here's the proclamation. Whereas, the environmental artist Wyland, best known for his series of 100 monumental marine life murals, created the Wyland Foundation in 1993. And whereas, seven years ago, a healthy competition for cleaner communities was initiated by the Wyland Foundation to encourage cities to care for its natural resources. And whereas, the city of Salem continues continues to explore ways to reduce consumption of water and power, and to inspire citizens. And whereas, clean, safe, and sustainable water resources and supplies are vital to the city of Salem's economy, environment, and its people. And whereas, the city of Salem, along with neighboring communities, can engage in efforts to become better environmental stewards. And whereas, even the smallest reduction in consumption, if done by many, can make notable differences. Now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, mayor of the city of Salem, Oregon, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2018, Wyland Mayor's Water Conservation Challenge Month, and urge all residents and businesses to help protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures, and further committing to the cause by joining me and signing up at www.mywaterpledge, one word, dot com, between April 1st and 30th. So I hope you'll join us.
Yes, I would.
Thank you very much, everybody. This means a lot to me. It's 41 years I've been teaching conservation education and natural resources. Next year will be my last, and I'm going to retire. But it's been very enjoyable. But I have something to share with you. 20 years ago this summer, in 1998, I was working at Hafield Marine Science Center for Oregon State University, teaching marine education. There was this crazy artist that came into town, and his name was Robert Wyland. And he started painting the side of the Depot Bay Fish Company. I thought that was fascinating, so I took my camp chair, and I parked it across the street, and I watched him. And I'd go down after work, and eventually, he'd come over and talk to me, and we'd go have a beer at the Bay Haven, you know, you got to do that. So this is really special to me, because I actually got to meet the guy and talk with him, and watch him paint the gray whales on the side of the Depot Bay Fish Company. So this is really important to me, and it's a highlight of my career. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, thank you. That's great. And finally, we're going to announce that April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. And receiving the proclamation from the Child Abuse Prevention Committee are Sue Bloom from the Boys and Girls Club, Julie Hilty from Family Building Blocks, Tricia Ratcliffe from Home Youth and Resources, and Mary Grimm from Marion County. They tricked me on the type size this time. [laughing] Whereas, every child deserves to live in a safe, loving, and caring family environment, and be given the opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow to their full potential. And whereas, in 2016, there were 11,843 reported victims of child abuse and neglect in Oregon. And of those reported cases, 1,255 were victims in Marion County. And whereas, we endeavor to join together as individuals, organizations, and government agencies to prevent child abuse in our county by providing opportunities to educate, train, and support caregivers, by raising awareness of relevant topics including child development, basic care skills, discipline strategies, and goal-setting for parents. And whereas, by strengthening families and providing safe, stable, and nurturing environments that are free from violence, abuse, and neglect, opportunities are created for children's optimal growth and success, ensuring a secure future for our communities where the needs of children are a priority and the needs of families are met. Now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, mayor of the city of Salem, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and ask the community to observe this month with programs and activities that help prevent child abuse and provide for children's physical, emotional, and developmental needs, dated this 26th day of March. Thank you, Sue.
Yes, I would like to say thank you on behalf of Marion County, Marion County's Child Abuse Prevention Month Committee, and all the programs and services that are a part of that. We appreciate the city's support very, very much, and would ask that you join us on the Capitol steps on April 6th at 10 o'clock, so we can start to build on a community's worth of awareness about this issue, and better ways to support our children and families. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Without objection, I'm going to move to public comment for unrelated items. I have one person signed up. Dan Ren.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Dan Ren, and I'm running for Marion County Circuit Court Judge. And I wanted to just take a moment to introduce myself to the members of the council. And I wanted to let everybody know some of the reasons why I am running for this position. I'm basically running for this position because Marion County and Salem is very important to me. I've lived in Salem since I was two years old, so I'm a product of this community. I was able to go, I went to South Salem High School, and I went to Lamont for my undergrad degree, and also Lamont Law School. So this is a very, this is my home. I was a lawyer for 10 years. I was serving the children and families of Marion County. I worked for the, with children that came involved in the juvenile, juvenile system, when DHS would remove children, and also when they were charged with crimes. And then I also helped institute the Veterans' Treatment Court here in Marion County. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's a program that helps veterans who have returned from service and are suffering some traumatic events from that. It helps them get involved with resources such as VA and other types of programs to help them get back to be productive members of society. And I'm very proud of the work that I did as a lawyer, but I felt that I could do more. And so in 2016, I accepted a position with the Marion County Circuit Court as what's called a judge pro tem. It's basically a, it's a full-time position, but it's kind of on a temporary basis. There's 13 elected judges in Marion County, and there's just too much work for all 13 of those to handle. So the court is authorized to hire what are called pro temps. And so I've been doing that full-time since 2011. And currently, I sit at the Marion County Criminal Annex. That's where all the criminal cases are heard in Marion County, at least to start with. As a judge pro tem, I hear over 950 cases a month out at the Criminal Annex, and those include all the bail decisions, either pleas and sentencing that happen with, out at the Criminal Annex. In my time out at the Criminal Annex, I have a proven record of being tough on crime, and making fair and reasoned decisions. I also treat everybody with respect that appears before me. I follow the rule of law, and I've been told that I have the right judicial temperament for this position. Before I served at the Annex, I also served at the referee's docket, which is the downtown courthouse, where I heard matters such as restraining order, excuse me, restraining order hearings, landlord-tenant matters, small claims, civil commitments, and support enforcement matters. So since 2016, I've been doing the work of the court every day. And so thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I'll leave some literature and some cards. If anybody has any questions, feel free to contact me at the information provided, and don't forget to vote on May 15th, all right? Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett.
Okay. We will move on, then, to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second by Nanki.
Items on the consent calendar, we've got the minutes from the March 12th council meeting, under resolutions, we've got 3.2A, authorizing use of eminent domain to acquire right-of-way from one remaining property for construction of the Fisher Road Northeast Extension Improvement Projects, which is taking that road and connecting it to Market Street. Under 3.2B, we've got some minor amendments to council policy C7, which deals with investment policy and portfolio guidelines. And these are more housekeeping than anything, minor amendments that are dealing with changes in some of our employees' titles, which have to go into the, go into the, into the policy to be accurate, those kinds of things. Under action items, 3.3A, it authorizes the city manager to execute a third amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon, extending the closing date for the acquisition of real property in the 4100 block of Fisher Road to March 31st, 2018. Under 3.3B, authorizes the city manager to execute the attached amendment to the intergovernmental agreement with the Salem Kaiser School District, extending the closing date to September 28th, 2018, for transferring multiple properties between the city and Salem Kaiser School District. And this is due basically to a shortage of surveyors, and we're having problems getting all the properties that are going to be exchanged surveyed in the time we need. And that's the consent calendar.
Great. Any discussion? Questions? Alrighty. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion passes. You vote again? I'm sorry.
No pressure on them.
Okay. Oh, okay. Do you guys want to say anything? Okay. I'm going to open a public hearing on reconsideration of the Lone Oak reimbursement district.
The city council will now conduct a public hearing to reconsider the formation of the Lone Oak Road reimbursement district, which was approved by city council on January 22nd, 2018, by resolution number 2018-8. The criteria applicable to the decision are set forth in the Salem Revised Code 200.310. The hearing will be conducted with the staff presentation first, followed by public testimony. Public testimony should be directed at the criteria applicable to the decision. Individuals testifying must provide their name and address or ward. Public testimony shall be provided as follows. The applicant's limited to 15 minutes, the neighborhood association limited to five minutes, other interested persons are limited to three minutes, and the applicant may have up to seven minutes rebuttal testimony limited to issues raised during public testimony. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time is expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Okay, we'll begin with staff report.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Bennett and city councilors. My name is Glenn Davis. I'm chief development engineer with Public Works Department. I'm here tonight to discuss this reconsideration hearing. Before we get into the specifics regarding the Lone Oak Road, I'd like to start with a reminder about reimbursement districts in general. And I'll do that by using a recent example that was approved by council in 2016. So this district involves street improvements that were constructed in conjunction with the Oregon State Police Facility at 36th and Kubler. So when the state police facility was approved, traffic studies showed that there was a serious traffic problem at 36 between Trelstad and Kubler. So a number of costly street improvements were required, as shown in white, and the state police developer made an application in 2016 for a reimbursement district to collect monies from neighboring developments who benefit from those improvements. So staff's recommendation was that we approve a district boundary shown in red that would benefit from the street improvements. And the end result was everyone in that boundary was required to pay $54 per vehicle trip as a reimbursement district fee to pay back the state police facility developer, a portion of the street construction costs. So reimbursement districts are formed, in general, when an area lacks key infrastructure, and when a developer is required to construct that infrastructure. When neighboring properties benefit from that development, from that improvement, then the reimbursement district allows for future developers to pay a district fee when they receive that benefit. And the ultimate result is everyone pays their fair share. So that's the idea and the purpose of the reimbursement district. So now, moving on to Lone Oak Road specifically, this reimbursement district hearing involves a missing portion of Lone Oak Road between Murfield Avenue to the north and Reese Hill to the south. And the missing portions of the road are shown in yellow. The estimated construction cost is 9.3 million, and these improvements are required as a condition of approval for this development called Oak Ridge Estates, which is shown in purple. On January 22nd of this year, staff recommended to council that the district boundary be divided into four distinct sub areas, as shown on the screen, with four different fee amounts. Council approved the staff recommendation, and adopted a resolution forming the district. And then later, council decided to reconsider the district and scheduled a second public hearing for tonight. So next, I'd like to address some key issues that the council should consider when deciding whether or not to modify the original conditions of approval. First, I'll remind the council that we're here tonight because the developer of a subdivision called Oak Ridge Estates has filed an application for a reimbursement district. The development has nothing to do with the Creekside Development to the north. The Oak Ridge developer is required to build very expensive improvements, and is requesting the council that they be reimbursed for a portion of those costs. Next, council may recall that Lone Oak Road was the subject of an earlier information report that had been presented in June of 2017. And after deliberating about this issue in June, council directed staff to return with the proposed solution for Lone Oak Road. Staff's recommendation is that this reimbursement district is the best way to resolve the Lone Oak problem. One reality to be understood is that no one development project can build this improvement. So this problem will not be solved by one developer. I'd also like to point out that there are immediate results if we do deny the district. Remember that the Oak Ridge Estates is a development that is required to construct improvements that are prohibitively expensive for one development to pay for itself. If the district is denied, then the developer will likely appeal to remove that requirement to construct the bridge, and instead will construct improvements only to Reese Hill Road. So the immediate likely result is that no funds will be collected toward bridge construction. Next, there's a number of proposed developments in this area, and any developer can request district formation. So if the district is denied, council will likely see another application for reimbursement district from another development in the area. And lastly, I would like to mention that there are some long-term results for denying the district, if that's considered. Assuming that the southerly Lone Oak connection is made between Sahaly, Sahali, and Reese Hill Road, then the developments south of the bridge would likely meet the development criteria without requiring a bridge connection. So the long-term result is that there may be no mechanism to require funds toward the bridge in the future, except from Creekside Phase 14. So the only legitimate options with denial may be that we either wait for the developer of Creekside 14 to develop the bridge, and to build it with that project, or that the city builds the bridge with future bond funds. And if the developer does build it with Creekside 14, they would also be eligible for reimbursement district application to council. So with that, I also want to move to next to it, some questions and answers, where during the public hearing and other communications after the hearing, city council received a number of questions from citizens about the district and the Creekside development. And I want to walk through those questions and answers as part of the presentation, and those are also shown in the staff report. And most of these don't relate directly to the reimbursement district application, but mostly provide additional background from the Creekside development in the past. So number one, why was the South Gateway Neighborhood Association not sent notice? And the answer is that formation of a reimbursement district is a funding mechanism and not a land use decision. The Salem Revised Code specifies that only the property owners within the proposed district are to be notified of the public hearing. So those owners are the ones who were notified. Next, the city records show that Creekside Development required Lone Oak Road to be constructed before the 351st building permit. What happened to that requirement was the question. The answer is that in the 1990s, there was a requirement that the development of Creekside was limited to 350 building permits until an off-site portion of Lone Oak Road was constructed. constructed to the north, as shown in the screen in white, north of Mildred Lane. In 1999, the developer received approval from the city to relocate that off-site connection from Lone Oak Road to Mildred Lane, as shown in white. And those improvements were completed at that time, and the 351st building permit limitation was removed. The third question, why isn't the original developer of Creekside required to construct Lone Oak Road? The answer is that the Creekside developer is required to construct the road and bridge as a condition of Phase 14, as shown in green on the screen. However, the timing of that phase is at the developer's discretion. So as stated earlier, if the developer does develop and chooses to build the road, they would be eligible to file a reimbursement district application, as I mentioned earlier. Question number four, isn't the reimbursement district presupposing golf course development by including it in the district? The answer is no. The district fee methodology estimates the likelihood of development in benefited areas during the lifespan of the district. So if the golf course does not develop, then the likelihood is that other areas within the district boundary will develop at greater densities than expected. Question five, why did the estimated bridge costs change so dramatically? The answer, there are different design approaches to this kind of project for the bridge. Generally speaking, the state and federal permitting agencies determine which is most appropriate for the project. So the developer's engineer proposed a long culvert with deep fills, which is less expensive and has a greater environmental impact. An example of that kind of project is shown on the screen, though not as deep. The proposal is much deeper than this. The higher-cost approach is a bridge structure similar to what's shown on the screen, and it preserves the natural area and has a less environmental impact. The city's cost estimate anticipates a bridge structure as the worst case, and we won't know the final design approach until permits are approved from state and federal agencies during the final design process. So this is the approach that's shown in the city's estimate, a bridge like this. Question six, if the reimbursement district fully funds Lone Oak Road improvements, then why has there been mention of a future street bond measure? So why a bond measure being mentioned? The answer is that district fees provide funding over the course of 20 years to fund this improvement. So if a street bond is proposed before the street and bridge are completed, there's a high likelihood that bond funds will be used as leverage to accelerate the construction project, and then those bond funds will be reimbursed by district fees as they're collected. Number seven, why is the city not requiring realignment of Lone Oak Road through the golf course in order to avoid the bridge and reduce costs? The answer, the location of Lone Oak Road is depicted in the current Salem Transportation System Plan, and thus is used as a basis for development conditions. Relocation of Lone Oak Road would both presuppose development of the golf course and would require an amendment to the Salem Transportation System Plan. So there's no certainty that the relocated street would be approved, nor would it necessarily reduce the cost of construction. That's not known at this time. Number eight, what are the lessons learned? How will the city prevent this scenario from occurring in the future where an expensive construction project is delayed until the final phase of a subdivision? The answer is that city regulations were amended in recent years to require more detailed phasing for phased subdivisions. So as a result, land use decisions now have greater specificity regarding how infrastructure requirements are phased. This scenario is unlikely to happen again. And the last question is, when exactly are the district payments required? Excuse me? The answer, back, back, back. The answer is that district fees are due when the property is inside the city, when a new development project is proposed, and when that project generates new vehicle trips. District payments are required at the time of final subdivision plat or building permit issuance where a subdivision is not proposed. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
We'll go ahead with the public comment. Okay, I need the Neighborhood Association representative then. Five minutes. Mr. Bennett.
I'm Jerry Bennett, board member for the South Gate Neighborhood Association, live at 804 Creekside Drive Southeast. And I'm here to be representative for the CIGA, which I'll call it from now on, and with the reimbursement district to district. And the legalese that we just heard is very important, and it has good points and bad. And we're not really opposed to development at all. We just are concerned about procedural effect and involvement of the citizens, particularly in southeast Salem, through our Neighborhood Association. So I'm here to represent and also to back up the reconsideration vote you approved on February 15th, 7/0. You've received already a very comprehensive document testimony from our chairman, Glenn Bailey, and I think he has pointed out what we call the essence of the types of remedies that are possible by the city. It is obvious that someone wants to build on the hill south of Creekside. When the city annexed and approved urbanizing the 300-plus acre Creekside Farm Land Valley, the developer signed agreements to build all the roads through the subdivision. However, the most difficult and expensive road remains unfinished, and that's the Lone Oak Road over Jory Creek and south of the hill. The city has approved a reimbursement district to help push the project forward. CIGA opposes this plan, and the following anecdotes that I can give you in just a brief sequence here, I have eight, try to get through them. CIGA was not consulted on this multifaceted, and we call it a land development and the funding development. You can't do one without the other. And a lot of the discussion and documents you've seen have intermingled those discussions. Going back to 1992, the development plan appears to have progressive flaws in supervision and performance. With the city making concessions, the developer is now in the 14th phase, and every one of those required a great deal of involvement to make everything keep working forward. And it is a beautiful Creekside Estates. The district is messy. It would not meet the criteria for a bona fide ballot measure. There are too many peripheral issues to be addressed. Two, the proposed 20-years district is designed for the city to transfer funding responsibility from developers to homeowners and taxpayers, but it may be detrimental to future councils also because you'll be making decisions that are sticked out there for a long time and in place. The district does not have a defensible business plan, as it is open-ended with no plausible funding guarantee at the end, unless you're looking at a street and road bond issue. The city will, however, recover expenses and gain from some increased property tax values as the divisions, developments happen up above on the hill. A large part of the proposed funding depends on a failure of Creekside Homeowners Association appeal in appellate court to determine if the covenants are valid or if the owners have the right to close the golf course for development purposes. However, there's a catch-22. The owners have repeatedly committed to the member strong group to keeping the golf course open, if it's profitable. We may need more understanding on this as we go in terms of legalese. The district's 210 mythical lots on Creekside Golf Course will not resolve the district's funding needs. It takes 800-plus new homes at about $10,000, and you have a waiver in there, a different cost, tax or fee assessment per unit to raise 9 million cost factor. It's not possible. Bond issue looks like would be inevitable. Taxpayers picking up the load. But the city could retrieve some of that money, and I think as we finally get up to develop the south end of Jory and all those development lots up there in the farmland, I think there probably will be a lot more opportunity for levying those fees and fines. I'll try to get very quickly here. The land use for the project included Jory Creek Bridge located on three acres in a regulated wetland that SRC 140090B required extensive protections by the developer, who aborted the project in 2007 because of costs that weren't understood at the onset, at least that's what we heard. Please note, the 210 building sites on the 155-acre valley known as Creekside Golf Course has wetlands also, watershed and environmental areas from Lone Creek Road to Sunnyside Road. Its three creeks are the main source of downstream flooding from Creekside to Turner and downtown Salem. This land also represents a major recreational site for southeast Salem.
Mr. Bennett, I apologize, but the time is up. I'm afraid your time is up. Let's see if the council has any questions.
I'd like to just say thank you, and if there's more, you have copies of this particular deal on your desk. We again ask you to rescind the proposal. Given time, the developers will come and do the job, and it won't be stuck with the homeowners.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bennett? Alrighty, thank you. The owner's representative, or the developer, or Mr. Shipman, who are you representing
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and members of the council for the record. My name is Mark Shipman. I'm a land use attorney with Sawfield Griggs, 250 Church Street, Southeast, Suite 200, Salem 97301. I'm here this evening representing the applicant, in this case, the property owner, and also of the proposed Oak Ridge subdivision property, and that's Alice and Garrett Burnt, which are the applicants in this matter before you this evening. We agree with the original and supplemental staff reports and their findings. The proposed reimbursement district satisfies the applicable approval criteria in SRC 200 315 Sub B, and more specifically, we believe the district is in the public interest, and it should be formed. The creation of the district will allow Lone Oak Road to be partially funded by future development activity through the entire benefited area. It's impossible to look back or reach back and require the prior developers to build out Lone Oak Road and the bridge at this point. The proposed reimbursement district is the best and most equitable option before you. By passing it, you will ensure that the land within the reimbursement district is developed, and as it's built on, monies will be collected to lessen the cost of the future Lone Oak Road improvements. So on behalf of Garrett and Alice Burnt, the applicants in this request, we respectfully request that you affirm Resolution 2018-08 as presented this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions of the council at this time.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Shipman. I'm referring to a statement you made where you said, "It is impossible to go back and ask the prior developer of phases 1 through 13 to now pay for any future developments, including the bridge." Could you explain why legally it is impossible, at least in your view, please?
Well, in my view, Counselor Anderson, that's a relevant question. So in my view, the only developer that is on the hook for the improvements of what I call the Lone Oak Bridge and Extension, the bridge over Jory Creek, would be the developer of what we call Phase 14, as staff identified. There's a memorandum of understanding and an improvement agreement that's been signed with the Creekside Homeowners Association and with the City of Salem that requires any further development in Phase 14 for that developer to build the bridge and the extension from Murfield up to Sahaly. What this reimbursement district does, but that only takes it up to Sahaly, what this reimbursement district does is this will allow the eventual development of not only that section from Murfield to Sahaly, but also will provide for the improvement from Sahaly all the way down to Reese Hill. So my clients, their 10 acres is just on the south side of Creekside, as you could see in your packets. And they are required as a part of their subdivision approval to improve not only the bridge, but also Lone Oak Road up to Sahaly, but also up to and past their property. That's why we asked for this request, because for that developer, it's just too much. So I hope I addressed your question, and if I didn't, I can try and restate it.
The developer of 14 is the same as the developer of 1 through 13?
Essentially.
And by essentially, you mean that it is the Takarsky umbrella with many different corporations and LLCs and entities under that?
The primary developer of the Creekside community, as I call it, was Hawaii Northwest Ventures, of which Mountain West Investments was a partner, of which Mr. Takarsky is the president. Creekside 14, to be particular, that was owned by both Mr. Takarsky as trustee of his trust, and it was also partially owned by Augusta Real Estate Properties, of which Mr. Takarsky is not an owner.
And so, and just another follow-up question. In your view, based on what you have seen, it would be legally impossible for the city to go back to the developers of 1 through 13 and say, "Whoops, you now have to pay for the bridge."
Yeah, that's proverbially water under the bridge.
Under the bridge. Or coal.
Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here tonight and trying to clarify the situation. So I guess I'm a little bit confused about 14, the development of 14. What if we approve this district and then 14 goes forward? It seems to me that it's their obligation at this point. It's the developer of 14. It's their duty to build this bridge. And then suddenly, we take away that duty by approving this district. Isn't that, is that accurate?
I don't think so. I think that, I think you still have the memorandum of understanding and the improvement agreement. You know, it's, Counselor Hoy, I don't think that you could say that that owner of Phase 14 would never develop. I could potentially see in the future where they could, especially as you get more development to the south. You know, at some point, there's going to be enough money in the reimbursement bucket, so to speak, where it's going to make economic sense for somebody to come in and do it.
Follow-up, Mr. Herr. So if it's there, if it's on them at this point, the developers of 14, and we develop this other funding mechanism, are they going to pay back the reimbursement district if they end up developing 14? Because it seems like there's two flows of money into that, into the same improvement.
If they develop, they would be obligated to, well, I'm not quite sure how that would work out, frankly, as a part of, they would be entitled to, any developer that would put in the full road improvement is going to be entitled to some reimbursements, okay? Because it's a collector road through there. It has to be built larger than what we would typically consider under a local street. So they're entitled to some reimbursements. How that actually works for the developer of 14, I haven't fully thought that through.
Thank you.
Ms. Shipman, you've done a number of these kinds of projects. Is there anyone comparable that you can think of? I keep thinking of the water line out to Illahi, and there was a reimbursement district associated with it, and it was long enough ago, I don't think any of us here, maybe, well, besides Nanki, who would maybe remember how that worked. Do you happen to know, do they build it and then are reimbursed? Is it built, then the reimbursement, who pays the first dollar or the first $9 million in one of these?
Well, whoever that unlucky developer is.
Well, is 14 the unlucky developer in this?
I think that 14 is saddled with the requirement. So I don't know, I wouldn't say that they're necessarily unlucky. They agreed to that requirement back in 2016, I believe. So, you know, as a part of the reimbursement district, you know, who's going to be responsible for building it? 14 would be one, you know. You know, I, I don't know if, if, I don't know that any developer south of Sahale would be required to, would be required to build the whole road. I think the, the intent is that, once this reimbursement district is in place, it essentially is able to gather more funds than we would be able to gather but for the district not being in place.
I, I guess what I'm trying to understand, and I, I think I'm following what Councilors Hoy and Anderson were doing, is just who, who will build this bridge and who will put up the money to build this bridge? Or road, or the whole system? How will?
I, I think that-
I think the bridge is the, is kind of the, the crux of the matter right now.
It is. It's the linchpin. It really is. And, and, you know, it's unfortunate that, you know, we've got the, you know, we've got the culvert option versus the, the span option, and that's the, that's the big difference. And I just think, I think it's hard to tell, Mayor, as far as, as far as who's going to be, who's going to be necessarily the person that, or the entity that would step up and, and construct that.
Well, who's responsible to step up and do it? Who, who right now has the legal obligation to step up and do it?
The, well, if it was the developer, the developer of Phase 14, if they were to choose to apply for another development, they would be on the hook. Currently, I believe that the, the Burns are on the hook.
Now, that's, I don't understand. There's no agreement with the Burns, is there, that they will build the bridge? Is that part of the deal? I mean-
Well, they can't. I mean, practically, they're-
Not practically, legally.
Legally?
Are they on the hook?
Well, here's, the fascinating thing about the Burnt application is that it was done 10 years ago, and it was applied for, prior to, I think, some important Supreme Court, Supreme Court case out of Florida, which would have a very significant impact on the city, had the city required this of the Burns in 2016, 2017. So that case wasn't decided until 2012. And so I think in the past, the city would, would, would impose conditions of approval that either were reasonably related or maybe not reasonably related, but they would, they would impose them anyway, and then, and then applicants like the Burns would come in and try and form a reimbursement district in order to, to be able to lessen the effect of that overall cost of that improvement. Sometimes the reimbursement districts, they work, they work well, and other times that they, they take time for them to, to come together. And in this case, legally, under the current applications, so the owner of 14 is, is on the hook, the Burns are on the hook to develop the, the bridge and the, and Lone Oak down to Sahale. I don't think that the property owner south of the Burns, which is a 20 acre parcel, I, I don't know where they are in the process, but they, they could also have that same condition of approval. But I think what the city did, Mayor, is that for each application in that, in that area, that quadrant, they imposed that condition on those, on those developers, and, and that's why in this case, the Burns have come back and-
Yeah.
-asked for some modifications.
Okay. Councilor Anderson, thank you. That was helpful.
Thank you. It all has been, but the most helpful thing right now would be if you could point out where Phase 14 is, and as I understand it, it would be the green elongated area between the two yellows?
Yes, so that, yes.
Okay. And that, and I don't know what that little square that overlaps there at the south end or the north end of the south, south yellow, if that's part of 14 or not, but generally, we're talking about the area where the road would go. That's where Phase 14 is.
And Phase 14 also goes on the right side or on the east and north of that yellow line? So that yellow, you can see the white outline-
Good, good. Mr. Davis will help us on this question, I think.
I didn't have a role.
The, the green area is number 14.
Correct.
So now let's get back to kind of the mayor's question.
Okay.
If Phase 14 starts to develop, they're the ones who have to make sure that the bridge is built somehow, either by the city doing it and of 14 paying it back. Is that, would that be your understanding?
Yes.
Okay, so if they don't do anything, and your clients take the first step to development, develop their piece of property, they would have to do the same thing?
That's correct.
And the reimbursement district would, in effect, reimburse your clients if they ended up being responsible for the actual building of the, the bridge, either by the city building it or by them building it? The reimbursement district would pay back your clients, which most likely would never fully reimburse your clients for the, the money they put out?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilor McCoy.
Mark, so with our vote on, what was January 22nd, too, and put in this reimbursement district, didn't that then come with the provision that your clients build a road south to Reese Hill before they could start construction? And that, and that being the case, if it, if the reimbursement district stays intact, they would not then be responsible for building the road down to Murfield and the bridge?
That's correct. My, our, my client has, has the option, either or.
Right, at this point, because of the reimbursement.
At this point, that's correct. They have the option to go south to Reese Hill.
And so that's an easy decision, frankly, because one's one and a, one and a half million and the other one's seven and a half million.
Well, yeah, one and a half to two million-
Yeah.
-to go, to go south. Correct.
Yeah. And if the person with the 20, 20 acre lot right behind them is going to have to help pay for that road if they come in here pretty quickly?
It makes the south leg a lot easier with, with, with the two developers.
Sure.
That's correct.
And finally, it's one and a half to two million, and they're going to put in, I don't know how much money that would be, basically all the money they put in initially into that reimbursement district, they're going to get back? It almost goes in and comes back to them as repayment?
Not all the, not all the, the money.
No, just the, for, if, for those two, if they developed and together generally build the road?
If they-
And pay nine, $10,000 a lot, basically, or $9,500.
It's not going to be 100% reimbursement. I need to, to look to public work staff on that.
But that would go, that money'd go back in and right back out to them, basically.
A portion, not, not all, not 100%.
Councilor Anderson.
I'm sorry, this is hopefully getting more clearer, but maybe a little more confusing. Responding to Councilor McCoy's question, even under this reimbursement district, your client would not be required to build the north section and the bridge?
That's correct.
So, which means that the, the assessment on the various areas would come pretty close to paying for the south area, unless your client's percentage of the participation in building the south end of Lone Oak?
I've, I've not done the, the exact math, but-
Okay, okay. But the, in effect, the reimbursement district would all go, the payments would all go toward the, the south portion of Lone Oak?
No, they, they wouldn't all go to the, to the south portion. They, I, I would look to Peter-
Okay. I, I, I'm looking to the public work staff, too. At some point, we'll want you to answer the same questions. But if, following up on Mr. McCoy's discussion, if the reimbursement district is put into place, and then 14 decides they want to build, would they only have to pay their assessment of the reimbursement district, that is their $9,500, or would the fact that they build kick in the early agreement with Phase 14 and make them responsible for paying the bridge?
I believe it kicks in the earlier agreement-
Okay.
-and they're able to use those other-
So in that situation, there really wouldn't seem to be much of an incentive for 14 to develop, develop at all?
At this time.
Yeah.
Keep waiting for someone to ask who's on first. Okay. I think we're done. We may, I guess we'll get to hear from you again later.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Quaidie?
My name is Debbie Quaidie. My address is 1137 Newport Road, Salem, Oregon. I own two properties, 1137 and 1147 on Newport Road. I've been a public school teacher for over 32 years. This property has been in my family since the spring of 1960. I was in third grade. It's located in the east section of the reimbursement district and the urban growth boundary. Because of the urban growth boundary, I don't get the right to vote for you, Mr. Mayor, or anyone on city council. I have no representation. On January 22nd, 2018, I attended a meeting here because of a letter I received 10 days prior to that date. I had no idea a vote would take place that night, affecting the legacy of my family, the dream my father passed on to me, the dream of passing this legacy on to my grandchildren. I went away feeling sick that night. Since that meeting, we have spent time searching for information to understand why. I heard at the January 22nd meeting, the council asking, how did this come to be? The answer was, well, it was before my time. So let's make lemonade out of this mistake and create a reimbursement district to pay for it. I asked you, is that responsible or fair? Please take the time to hear the stories, read the written comments sent into you, and listen to the testimony. This is no simple matter. I believe your vote needs to reject the reimbursement district. We are not lemons to be made into lemonade for others' mistakes. We are families, responsible taxpayers, and people who are concerned about the future. This decision needs to be made in a fair, reasonable manner we can all be proud of. Thank you for letting me share my story.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Steve Quaidie?
I have something put up on, if possible, just put this up to be shown on the screen? No? Okay, that's good. Okay, my name's Steve Quaidie. Address is 1137 Newport. We urge rejection. It seems maybe if you could show a way to lower the cost of the bridge, you could get the elected officials to take notice. Same with the use of the Creekside Golf Course. Just provide and uncover true and clarifying information if elected, elected leadership might take notice. There are indicators that the 5.7 million is out of line. Jefferson Marion Road Southeast at 2.6 million. The Whipper Bridge replacement near the city of Turner, 2.2 million. The community should have choices, options on bridge design, cost, and location. By the way, we have come to believe that the Jory Creek Bridge at the site determined by the current Salem Transportation System Plan will have safety issues and will require constant volunteers to retrieve all the garbage under it. Regardless of how this turns out tonight, we urge community to take an interest in this bridge and make sure it's safe, make sure it won't be a garbage pit, make sure it's the best location. Tonight, we urge elected officials to reject this district, then direct and unleash the staff to find at least three options for realignment with an eye to creating an amendment to the transportation plan. I bet it would be refreshing to work on engineering and leave the creative financing behind. It seems Debbie and I have been foolish, trying to explore options for possible high costs, and foolish to object to the use of the Creekside Golf Course as a centerpiece of the formation of a Lone Oak Bridge reimbursement district. For at this stage, there are those with closed ears on costs. For at this stage, there is those with closed ears on conversion of a golf course problem. That's off the table for them tonight. They must be thinking they will face the actual description of the real cost at a later stage. We will face the cost at a later stage. We will face the cost at a later stage. Sounds familiar? So the reimbursement district was credited not to fully pay for the projects its list, not even close. It's simply being used as a tool to collect an unknown down payment. But a down payment nevertheless, and it's blatant, I can see how anyone who favors its creation would deny it's any more than a down payment. I urge council to reject.
Okay, thank you. Brian Hines.
Brian Hines, 10371 Lake Drive, Southeast Salem. I, I have read and written a lot, to put it mildly, about the Creekside development and the Lone Oak Road reimbursement district. Three issues stand out for me. First, in 2007, the Creekside developers started to construct a Jory Creek Crossing in the northern unbuilt section of Lone Oak Road. The City of Salem staff report says permits for this work were issued after the developers' engineering consultant prepared plans. So at that time, the city and the Creekside developer had a common understanding of the Lone Oak Road improvements, but the Creekside developers stopped work on those improvements and never completed them. A Salem Weekly reporter, Helen Caswell, has searched for documents that explain why the Creekside developers stopped that work and wasn't required to complete the improvements. She couldn't find any. This is strange, since there are voluminous documents relating to other aspects of Creekside development. Since we don't know why that work was begun by the Creekside developer, then stopped and never restarted, the claim by city officials that nothing like this will ever happen again is dubious. Second, even though the staff report for this hearing says that the Creekside developer is required to construct the northern segment of Lone Oak Road, city staff have said that this segment will need to be in a streets and bridges bond. So why should it be included in the reimbursement district? It doesn't make sense for the general public to pay for the northern Lone Oak Road improvements through a streets and bridges bond and have lot owners in South Salem contribute to a reimbursement district fund. Third, the southern unbuilt section of Lone Oak Road should be paid for by the developers of two subdivisions planned for south of Sahale Drive. Attorney Mark Shipman has said that his clients, the Oak Ridge Estates developers, wanted the City of Salem to find a way for pain for the south portion of Lone Oak Road. In other words, they didn't want to pay the whole bill. They wanted somebody else to pay for it, and the city so far has obliged them. So this led to the reimbursement district proposal. But their 10 acre, 38 lot subdivision, when combined with a nearby 20 acre subdivision, likely will constitute over 100 lots. Since the southern section of Lone Oak Road would pass by and through the two subdivisions, it sure seems like the developer should be paying the cost of extending Lone Oak Road south to Reese Hill Road. So there isn't a need for the reimbursement district, since the northern section of Lone Oak Road either is the responsibility of the Creekside developer or will be part of a streets and bridges bond, and the southern section should be paid for by two subdivisions constituting 30 acres and probably more than 100 lots. So I don't see the need for it, and obviously, there's a number of people here that see no need for the reimbursement district also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Dan Dorn.
Dan Dorn, PO Box 3577, Salem, Oregon. I'm here tonight to support the reimbursement district. I think it's a creative approach to solve a, a problem. I just ask for one modification to the reimbursement district, and that is that the, it be amended not to include developed lots. In Mr. Davis's presentation, the last slide, he showed, he said that reimbursement is triggered on three items, and I can only remember two of them, but one was that, I think it was, that creates new trips, and a developed lot does not create new trips because the trips have already been calculated in the formula. And I think it, one was new development, is that correct? And it's, a developed lot is not new development. The streets are in, the curbs are in, sewers, water is all there. The only thing that hasn't been done in some cases, and not that many of them, but a home has not been built, so a permit has not been taken out for the construction of a home. That's a different animal. I can see charging any land use item, so a new development, new subdivision, that would, would trigger a, a collection of the reimbursement. And the only other thing I have to say is I have no idea who will build the bridge, and please don't ask me that. But that concludes my testimony. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Alrighty, John Shepherd. All righty, John Shepherd.
My name is John Shepherd, and I live in Ward Four. I see some faces I've seen before here. I see many new faces. It's always fun to be in front of this group. It has been quite a few years. In the spirit of Goal One of the Oregon statewide planning goals, which express the state policies on land use, I'm here as a citizen, and I'm here to help. The staff report contains serious flaws. The report fails to address the requirements specified in the Salem Unified Development Code. This code specifies, as an example, the application form be supplied by the city. I read Mr. Shipman's application. He had to form his own form. The requirements to establish a reimbursement, and he also had to have, we also have to have the requirements to establish a reimbursement district. I have provided testimony in written form to this council, and I have four examples in that written form that show failures for the report, which comes from the staff, in order to qualify this as a valid reimbursement district. The issue has been described by journalists as more nuanced than anyone lacking specialized knowledge or training could explain fully and fairly, especially in a way that is readable by the general public. Well, I've read several hundred pages of public hearing testimony. I've watched hours of public testimony. I've examined a hundred tax records that date back to nineteen ninety-one on this subject. The district will prejudice your decision for future land use actions on undeveloped land in Creekside. You are deciding a funding plan that is based on land use actions that you have not considered. This is an implementation item for a land use action. Let me try to summarize. This has been a shell game. It is a messy attempt to correct the sins of the past twenty-five years. The city council would be advised to shut this down and run.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilor Anderson.
Mr. Shepherd, I am looking at three documents that say, each says, "Staff report fails to meet requirements of various Salem revised codes."
Yes, sir.
Is that the material you submitted?
There's four of those documents I've submitted. Yes, sir.
Well, I see three, and one has two different mistakes you allege on it. All I want to know is, I had no idea who submitted these, but it is you.
I submitted those, sir.
Okay.
And I provided to the...
Yeah, I've got them. It just doesn't say from John Shepherd.
I emailed them to all of the city councilors as well.
Okay.
And one of the... May I ask?
Well, no, that's all the questions I have, are these your documents?
Yes, sir.
And I've looked at them. Thank you very much.
Any further questions? Mr. Shepherd, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Laura Meisner.
Good evening. I'm Laura Meisner, and I live in Ward Four. I urge no vote on the reimbursement district. I'm addressing the city manager's staff report, questions and answers, numbers three and six in particular. Question three states flat out that the Creekside developer is now required to construct Lone Oak Road over Jory Creek. So why are people talking about a reimbursement district? To have future residents pay for what the developer is legally obligated to construct? Think about this before you vote. Here is a direct quote from the staff report. "The Creekside developer is required to construct Lone Oak Road between Murfield Avenue and Augusta Drive as a condition for the next sub-phase of Creekside's Phase XIV development. However, the timing of construction is at the developer's discretion, not the city's. The city council has voted on this issue twice already, and this is the first time the city manager's staff put in writing that the Creekside developer is required to construct the Lone Oak Road. The newest report also mentions that the same obligation to build Lone Oak applies to other developers who want the city to approve subdivisions south of Jory Creek. The first developer who needs building permits is the one to build it, then other developers can share the cost by asking the city for a reimbursement district after the bridge is built. Why? Let me quote from the Marion County Commissioner's nineteen ninety letter to the city of Salem with regard to improvement of Lone Oak Road south of the city. It seems inappropriate to require the taxpayers of the county or the city to pay for improvements that obviously and directly benefit the developer. Question six addresses the escalating cost of the structure over Jory Creek. Why did the city allow the developer to start to build the culvert over the creek when regulations prescribe the lower environmental impact of an actual bridge structure? The developer's engineers did not just propose a long culvert, as noted in the staff report. The developer actually built the culvert and then abandoned the culvert. The developer and city staffers trying to stick future homeowners and Salem taxpayers with the bill to both demolish the culvert and build a full-fledged bridge that spans the Jory Creek Canyon. Do we really want to vote for this funding plan that will stick taxpayers with the bill? Since when are developers allowed to reneg on their obligation and make taxpayers vote and foot the bill? Please vote no. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Bill Dalton.
I hope that doesn't take away from my time.
It did.
I did. Now I know why you all are paid the big bucks. This is a very complicated issue, and a lot of you have basically inherited some things that, as a long-term administrator, I would rather not inherit and would take no pride in inheriting and would have taken no pride in having created. I think some of the people that have spoken before me have spoken very well to the issues and concerns that I have. So I'm going to speak to a slightly different one, and the concerns I will be expressing are basically in opposition to keeping the current approval that apparently has been made by the council. Whether I simply request that you completely set it aside or temporarily set it aside, I certainly leave that up to you. As some of you know, after a long career in public service, I have devoted my current volunteer activities to safety, public safety, particularly emergency preparedness. And I look at this issue in terms of the development of the south side of the Creekside area, in terms of the kinds of disasters that we have seen, experienced across our country, and the kinds of disasters that I'm involved in helping prepare for. The worst one, of course, being the potential for a Cascadia quake. As you look at the potential for developing the bridge, and as you look at the potential for developing additional homesites on the south side of Creekside, I would ask you, if you haven't already, to take a walk, take a drive over there. I have on a couple of occasions. It's almost hard to believe that some of the homes that were allowed to be developed overlooking the golf course have been allowed to. Somebody at some point is going to be asking why their loved ones were basically condemned to death by approval of areas that simply were not appropriate for development. The development of a bridge over that area has to be done extraordinarily carefully because that is probably one of the most quake-prone and landslide-prone areas in our entire city. So I would simply ask you to look at the whole concept of not only the process issues that have been so well addressed by others, but take a look at the implications for the future that you're being asked to fund. I wouldn't want to fund it as a city. I'm not sure I'd even want to fund some of these developments as a developer. Thanks so much for rehearing this issue.
Thank you. Rich Fry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I'm in front of you again on this issue. My address is seven-seven-seven Sahaly Drive, Southeast. I've spoken to the council several times about only having one access to this community. However, I've been doing quite a bit of research, and just to clarify a couple of things that have been said tonight, the memorandum of understanding between the homeowners association, the city, and Hawaii Northwest Ventures, or the developer of Creekside, states that the city will build the bridge and that the developer will give up the right-of-way and build the road if he does any more development in what is Phase XIV. Originally, it was called Phase XIII, it's now called Phase XIV, which is that area that we looked at before, going to the north. So unless he starts another house or does something else in there, he's not responsible to build that. And I have the memorandum of understanding right here. So I went back and I looked at the Luba appeal that we've all talked about on several occasions, and in the Luba appeal, it says, "The city and the applicant subsequently entered into a performance agreement that requires the applicant to construct required improvements, including Lone Oak Extension, within eighteen months. The agreement authorizes the city to withhold construction permits for lots within Phase XII and XIII if required improvements are not constructed. In two thousand and seven, the city approved the final plat for Phase XII." So I have not seen an agreement that says what this is stating out of the Luba appeal. I can't find that anywhere. And I have also got a draft of an improvement agreement for Phase XII and D of the draft. Now, this was not adopted, but it was a draft from the developer stating that Lone Oak Road shall be extended northward to its current terminus, which is south of lots, on the south lot line of five-sixteen, to a point across Jory Creek to where it will connect to the other terminus in Phase X. So the developer said, "I will do this," and it is nowhere in the requirements or conditions of approval for Phase XII. So that's how we got where we're at. He agreed to do it, so I owe Mr. Tsukarsky an apology because all this time, I've been saying that he didn't do what he said he would do. And right here, he said, "I'll do it," but yet the conditions of approval say, "You don't have to do it." So that's an issue for me. And I don't understand how the Luba appeal decision says that there's an agreement, but yet no one can come up with an agreement. So that's all I've got, unless you've got questions.
Any questions? Why?
Maybe a lot of questions.
Yeah.
No question?
So kind of boil that down, Mr. Fry. What exactly are you telling? Do it again, just in the real short version for someone who's real tired on this.
So when Phase XII was being developed, the developer said, "I'll build the road and the bridge."
Okay.
Then it wasn't a requirement for him to build the road and the bridge.
Why? Do you know why?
I don't know why. That's my biggest question.
Who would know?
It was originally in the conditions of approval for Phase XII and XIII, then it was modified and taken out. I don't know why.
How would that happen?
That would be Public Works would answer that question.
Okay. We'll look for an answer then.
All right. And then later, the homeowners association sued over the Phase XII and thirteen, fourteen, excuse me, Phase XIV, and came to an agreement between the city, the developer, and the homeowners association, saying that the city would build the bridge, the developer would give up the right-of-way for Lone Oak, and if he builds anything else past the three lots that he was allowed to do in Phase XIV, that he would actually build the road. So the homeowners association forced him into that.
Okay.
All right. And then, when we had a Luba appeal on the four lots on Sahaly, somehow, Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals, had an understanding that there was another agreement between the city and the developer that he would build the road within eighteen months. And I don't know how Luba got that impression unless there's an agreement. But yet, no one has produced an agreement.
Okay.
That would be a second or third time that he had agreed to do it.
Okay. Councilor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in your opinion, Mr. Fry, whose obligation is it to build that bridge today?
Well, not having the document signed that says that he's responsible, at this point, he's not responsible until he does something else in Phase XIV. Then he would become responsible.
Rich?
So... For the road.
Who's responsible today if he never develops it? Nobody?
No. And there's only twenty-eight lots left in that phase, so that's why it's a, it's hard to say whether or not he will develop that phase. It's a very steep phase. It's very, very hard to develop, and it's going to have a lot of cost to him. So when lot prices go up, he may say, "Okay, yeah, let's do this." But until that time, then he doesn't have to, he won't do it. And the reimbursement district, I think, is the only option that we have. I'm actually in favor of it.
Councilor McCoy.
So I thought I heard earlier, Rich, in this discussion, that the developer of XIV was on the hook for the road and the bridge. That seems to me I heard that somewhere.
That was inaccurate. I have the memorandum of understanding. I was part of the committee that worked with Mr. Lean, who was the attorney for the homeowners association, and it clearly states that the city has taken on the responsibility of the bridge, and at that time, it said at no less than seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And it's supposed to go on the CIP, and then the developer would be responsible for giving up the right-of-way right then, which he has, and that if he does any more development in that phase, he will have to build the road.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jackie Leung.
Good afternoon, or good evening, everybody. Mayor Bennett, city manager, and city councilors. My name is Jackie Leung, and I live in Ward Four. I am testifying before the city council today to express my opposition to the Lone Oak Road funding plan, which is based on developing the golf course with housing. I want to share my public safety concerns specifically about the Lone Oak Road drawing for my master's in public health and also my degree in law as a Willamette Law graduate. Is no question that Salem is growing. We're seeing it in south, southeast in particular. But while our community is growing, we also need to ensure that the new developments that are being built are aligned with our current community needs. I am glad that the city council rescinded the Lone Oak Road reimbursement district plan last month, but today, it is up for a vote again. The plan does not actually build the road and may place more residents in harm's way without access to timely emergency response. With only one way in or out over the steep winding streets, building more homes south of Jory Creek is a concern of public safety. What are the emergency response times for residents calling nine-one-one, and can there be a response at all during an ice storm? How many certified residents live there, and does every household know how to reach them? I also have questions about how this issue was handled. Is the city management ensuring transparency in their decision-making process when the South Gateway Neighborhood Association was not consulted and there was no information that was provided in staff reports about the developer's obligations? Do we need to audit our planning and public works departments to ensure that the city is supervising and holding developers responsible for development plans? Are we doing what should, what we should, to keep the cost of housing so that we could afford it? If we're building roads over deep canyons and passing the developer's obligations onto home buyers and raising property taxes to pay for Jory Creek Bridge? When Salem considers a plan that is based on building homes on the golf course, the city council needs to take a closer look at the comprehensive land use plan with protections for our dwindling reserves of open space. Protecting the open space of the golf course also avoids actions that create flood risks not only to Salem's businesses but to the public facilities and residents' homes. So I strongly urge the council here today to vote no on the reimbursement district. Thank you.
Jackie, I had a question. I just wanted to understand, so you're opposed to the south extension of Lone Oak Road as well. I thought I heard you say that because that was a single access, that was a potential safety problem. I want to understand kind of where you are on that south end of Lone Oak. I think that's become part of the discussion here.
I'm opposing, or I'm asking you to oppose, is that what your question is?
I want to understand, you talked about one way in, one way out as a safety issue, that south end, I thought, was to help resolve that. Do you not see it that way? Maybe I misunderstood what you said.
Well, when I'm referring to that specifically, the plan itself, it does not build the road itself. And what the problem is, like even if it was built, let's just say it was built.
Yeah.
There's still going to be issues that are going to be happening to everyone. My concern is about... My concern is about protecting the open space, protecting that, making sure that we're holding the developers accountable for their actions.
I understood your open space. I wanted to understand your safety concerns because that's what brought this in part to us, was sort of one way in, one way out, was a safety issue on Sahali. And I'm just trying to understand, I thought, if I understood your opposition to Lone Oak, would that then eliminate that? I'm just a little confused by the, by what you said. But I guess I am confused.
Fair enough.
Because that is not your concern. You're not concerned about public safety on this.
Well, public safety is also a concern, so let's just say.
One way in, one way out.
Well, let's just say that public safety is a concern. So let's just say if it was built, then the question still becomes, well, what is the public safety response time? What is accessibility to CERT volunteers in the area? Do the residents there know who are the CERT volunteers?
That wasn't your testimony. Your testimony was about the road. I just want to make sure.
Right, right, right.
It sounded to me like you favored that southern piece, then it sounded like you didn't.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Nope. Kathy Shin, please.
My name is Kathy Shea. I live, it's a Norwegian name, what can I say? I live at 6608 Devon Avenue Southeast, just sort of to the left of the sea under the central area. I have several concerns that I'd like to share with the council tonight. One is the lack of control those of us outside of city limits feel. We don't vote for you, we have no say in the matter, yet you are deciding things that directly impact us. I'm also very concerned about the lack of effective communication throughout this whole process. We didn't know that the hearing we attended on January 22nd was going to be a final vote, surprise! We didn't even know the district was being considered. Then I find out that it's been rescinded in February. We didn't know. As far as we knew, it was still there. If we are going to be impacted, we need to be notified, even if it's not a proper funding issue or whatever it is. You need to understand that everybody who is affected should be informed, not just following the letter of the law. I'm also very concerned with the city of Salem's failure to hold the developer, who shall not be named, sorry, guys, accountable for what he was supposed to have done for the past 25 years. It is a failure on the planning department, it's a failure on the council, and we are all being asked to pay for it. My other issue has to do with the fact, if you look at the map, you'll see that this district only impacts the develop, that's not the right word, but previously developed homes are not being, are not paying their fair share. While all those houses along, I don't know if that's Phase 12, what they are, but along Sahali and up on Augusta, will not pay anything toward this road, yet they will be the primary users of this road. If you're going to build a district, then have everybody in the district equally accountable. I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Shea. Dan?
Thank you. I'm Dan Shea, same address, 6608 Devon Avenue Southeast. And I'm sorry if I get a little angry at some of you here. Some of you voted yes on January 22nd, didn't really know the area, I believe. I'd be happy to take you up there and show you what we're really talking about. If you look at the map, people in central area, people in east area, picture them using this road that you're talking about. The people who you want to pay for directly in these areas aren't going to use it. There's no reason to go over there. So somebody in the city, the planners, made a decision, "Okay, we have to have this area." Why did they create this reimbursement district? Well, we've done it before, but no one explained how the people living nearest would pay nothing. In other words, all the people up there along Sahali aren't going to pay. Why? Oh, well, because they already have their houses built there. There's nothing to build. So why did you come up with a plan that says, "Oh, if the house is already built, they don't have to pay for anything"? I think that system stinks. So those of us in the central, those of us in the east, who will virtually never use this road, are the ones you're asking to pay for it. And it's just plain wrong. As a matter of fact, it could become a longtime legal issue, I'll tell you. The people who are on Augusta up there, well, I can't show you, but they're the ones who are on that little bit of Lone Oak every single day when they go in and out of their house. They're not going to pay anything for it. We are in effect being required to pay for the city of Salem's failure to follow up and hold Tekarski and whoever else was involved, the money man, for what happened. Do not put that on us who are outside the city, have no way to deal with that. Nothing to say about it, except, "Hey, there's a meeting. Come on over here and talk." This is wrong. Lack of accountability has been allowed to continue for 25 years, so this new development is getting us. Why isn't the city of Salem being proactive? I know, I know, different people have said, as a matter of fact, almost none of you knew anything about why Tekarski wasn't paying for it at that last meeting on the 22nd. And we heard different things, and, "Yeah, okay, okay, okay." So we're going to have these people over here, who are not a part of the city, who will virtually never use that road, we're going to have them pay for it, and that'll just cover it. Think about what you're doing. Is that what Salem has become? We lived inside Salem for 34 years. We were part of it. We moved out at retirement time to get some space around us. I am so disappointed at what I see in this grab some people outside, make them pay for it thing. And again, I'm sorry for if I'm attacking you, but thank you. Questions?
Counselor Nanki? No, we'll pass on that.
Thank you, and thanks for coming down. So you already have a house on the property underneath the letter C?
Yes, we do.
And do you plan on developing any more of your property?
I don't have a plan, but we have 1 and 3/4 acres. We're going to be, I mean, someday, we're probably going to want to sell it. Maybe we'll even die, who knows?
Sure.
The point is, you've reduced the value of my property, and the people up there in Creekside, who are going to use the road, aren't included. They're paying nothing. Can you really believe that that's okay?
Well, and, yes, because they've already paid all of their fees associated with development. So you'd have to form some kind of an improvement district. And that would only be facilities that are there now, nobody in the future, so it'd almost have to be morphing two different entities together, and I'd have to look at that one more. But that would probably be more confusing than what it is we're trying to do now. But you understand that you have to actually want to annex into this city before you would be required and you'd have to develop.
I know that. But what you've done is, you've said $5,000 off the value of my property if I try to sell it to anybody. I know, it's 4,000, yeah, something.
No, you could still sell it.
Yes, I can. But it reduces the value of my property for something that I will never use.
No.
I will not go down that road.
It would only reduce it if someone were to want to annex it and then develop on it. Otherwise, you will never have to pay that $5,000.
It will reduce the value of the property for anyone who buys it and knows that it's coming up.
Okay.
Not until you annex it. And in 20 years, that requirement disappears as well, so.
Yes, I know. So if they want to develop half of it and build a house, that's going to reduce their value by $5,000, how much are they going to pay me? $5,000 less? I don't know.
I, yeah.
It's still wrong to do it because we will not use it. Why did these folks in the city decide that we out there who won't use the road would have to pay for it? That seems really sneaky. Think about, think about how it sits.
Well, and it's all about a connectivity issue as well, so, which is why the further away people get from that, the lesser the fee. But I can see where you're coming from as far as potentially never, ever using it.
Well, the two of you last time said, "Okay, we're not going to, or we don't really like it, but we're going to vote for it." You felt, you had to, "Go ahead, yeah, make sure that the city does what it's supposed to do." But you knew, I believe in my head, that you knew that it was wrong to charge these people out there who really had no say at all to pay for this, that somebody else did and wants to build.
Okay? Any more questions?
Thanks.
All righty, thank you very much. I have no one else signed up. Is there anyone else that wanted to testify? Go ahead, yeah. If you'd give your name and address or ward, that'd help.
Good evening. My name is Sam Quadey. I live at 414 Reese Hill Road. I have three properties to the west of the west area. I am outside this reimbursement district. I am not prepared a statement. Instead, I chose to listen to the presentations that were given and try to recap for you guys why you should be rejecting this. First off, I'd like to congratulate you for bringing it back up for discussion. There was a mistake that was made on January 22nd, and I'm very glad that this council is taking the correct steps. We heard a lot of different discussions. One of the concepts that was not presented was testimony provided by the Elkins and written testimony that live on Devon. And they talked about the line of sight safety issues. And there are exceeding safety issues on Reese Hill Road and the increase of traffic that this Lone Oak Extension to Reese Hill Road will provide. There is exceedingly inadequate line of sight where the additional traffic would come on to Reese Hill Road. It's a big safety issue. That wasn't brought up this evening. The concepts of whether, when a reimbursement district is required and when a reimbursement district is appropriate had a couple bullet points on the slide at the beginning of this evening. One of those was, pardon me, I was looking at my notes here, that the neighbors benefit. And obviously, as we hear the testimony this evening, the neighbors are not benefiting from this. Unlike the example that was given with the police station, where obviously all those surrounding the police station would benefit, this is not a benefit to the neighbors. This reimbursement district should not be approved. The development required was another concept of why a reimbursement district would be appropriate. This is not a required development. The only reason why this bridge and this extension to Reese Hill Road is a requirement to these developers is to serve the development. The developers, therefore, should be continually on the hook to pay for this. I exceedingly urge you to reject this proposal. Thank you for bringing it back up. We are in no hurry to approve this project.
Any questions? Thank you for testifying.
Thank you.
Just need your name and address.
I'm Mike Brewer. I live at 6710 Devon Avenue at the top of the hill in the red area. And I didn't come prepared to talk tonight, but I do want to bring up that, like Mr. Shea said earlier, there, no one is going to use that road in the red or in rainbow. It's ridiculous to have people in the central area pay for it. It's preposterous to have people in the blue area pay for it. That's not how you get to town. And if there's going to be, I know you say if there's, you don't have to pay for it right of way, I mean, it's only if you develop it. The money is still going to be missing out of the value of the property. It's just a difference between someone picking your pocket and getting your cash, or someone stealing your credit card and you paying for it 30 days later when you see your bill. There's really no way around the fact that this money is coming out of the pockets of people that have nothing to do and will never use that road. I guess that's all I have to say right now.
I'm curious on that one. Do you see any value added to this road, to your property? That's often the thought is that they're...
I see it being essential, well, really, we need to have the bridge that Tekarski was supposed to put in all those years ago.
So the bridge would add some value, do you think, to your property or not? I'm just curious, because sometimes we...
Not really there.
There are little ways away, but they'll add...
I'm thinking about public safety.
Yeah.
For the people in this new development area and for the people in Sahali, Station 7 serves that area. Coming in across the bridge would cut minutes off their response time.
Ah.
So that would be okay for them.
Where's your fire station from here? Where is the fire station? Where do they come out of from here? You know?
Liberty Road.
Liberty and Coogler. So they'd be using this road to come into that area? Okay.
The bridge would be quicker.
That's what I mean. If the bridge in Lone Oak, if the full Lone Oak Extension's there, you'd come in on Lone Oak, across that bridge, down, what is that, Reese Hill and up, whatever it is, to get to your place? Is that how it would work? Or how would they get to you?
We're far enough down, they would probably come in on Reese Hill Road for us.
So it would cut response time if you had an emergency?
For the new development area, it would.
It really would there, yeah.
Yeah. I don't think the fire truck could make it up the hill.
Okay.
So you've seen it, it's impressive.
I see what you mean.
Okay. The one thing I'm curious about, though, is can we slow this down or take a look at putting in a bond issue and having the city float a bond to put this bridge in? Because this is going to lead development into that area that's way at the end of the road at this time. And it just seems like the most logical place to go at this point for the city to do this. When we had railroads come out, we didn't have farmers blotting or plopping down all over the land there. The railroad, put the railroad through first and then sold land off to people along it. And that seems like something that the city could do, develop that bridge with a bond, and then open that entire area up. Because I know developers are probably shy because of this very issue.
Yeah.
Of the bridge, from doing anything at all out there.
Well, that's what seems to have brought it to us, was the situation where people want to develop some property and really can't because no bridge, no money. And that's probably got us to this point. So I, yeah. Okay. Did you have something, Sally?
I think I'll save it for discussion.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Let's get, do we want staff first?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do staff, then rebuttal. Let me start with one for you. The neighborhood should have been notified. Yes, no, not required? What's the, what's the answer there, do you think?
The code provision does not require, does not specify that the neighborhood is notified. That is in the code specifically.
Should we be visiting that in terms of our notification around these reimbursement districts where we're pulling in all these people in blue and red, and they have no notice at all, they're not in the city? Should we be looking at that? Should we be looking at an ordinance change when we go through the conference?
That's a good question, yeah. That is a good question. This, I mean, I will say this, I've done a dozen of these probably, and this is the first time that this has been this controversial. Most of them have been much less.
Yeah.
So, but that's a good question.
Yeah. I just wonder, when you get this kind of reach, should you be looking? And you're going across jurisdictional lines, and you've got an active neighborhood group, should we? I just pose that rhetorically, Lisa, that that might be worthwhile. Okay? Any other questions? Counselor McCoy?
So I got one, the first obvious one, I suppose, if we deny this reimbursement district, what occurs? I mean, just what occurs with the bridge? Is the current development going to have that road to the south, or is everything just stopped?
There's a small amount of presumption here. Mr. Shipman will have some say into that, but the expectation is, there is a condition of approval for the Oak Ridge subdivision to build the road. And so with denial of this, then now they would be responsible to build the entire road with no reimbursement. So the anticipation is that they would come back amending their decision or reapplying with a different expectation for street improvements, likely limiting their development just to the southerly connection in the west area, just the south portion. And they would likely come back here with a reimbursement district application for just that section. So that's probably the sequence of events.
Counselor Hoyt? Aren't there some other options as well? And I don't, I'm just, I'm very sincere in my question because I think that there have to be other options. Like, if we reject this thing, couldn't we look at a different reimbursement district? Couldn't we maybe engage the, Mr. Tekarski and... Couldn't we maybe engage the, Mr. Takarski and those folks and have a discussion with them about possibly building the bridge or building a bridge or building something? I mean, aren't there other intermediate steps that we could take other than just yes or no?
The council consider other configurations for the district, certainly. That would be something that could be considered. The, I can't speak for Mr. Takarski. There have been discussions with Mr. Takarski about this at length, as you have heard from the MOU. And so he could have filed a reimbursement district himself for a portion of these improvements and proposed to build it, and he has not. So it's somewhat, it's kind of, we received the application here and we're doing with it what we can. It was the application that has brought us here.
Understood. A follow-up?
I think that's an important point, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. That this is filed by someone else coming to the city. City didn't make this up.
Right.
Okay.
A follow-up though. What if we were to look at a different district and say, all the properties out there, developed, undeveloped, whatever? Have you ever done the math on what that might cost, what that might cost each property owner? Each property owner that could really benefit from that road?
We've done math on a number of options. I don't have them all with me. The reimbursement district only triggers undeveloped property. So that is the nature of the application. So it is virtually impossible to take developed properties and charge a reimbursement district fee with this scenario. So you'd have to come up with a different kind of scenario that would be different to kind of application.
Understood. But are there other funding mechanisms available to us other than reimbursement district?
The local improvement district concept is something that has been used in, not so much in Salem, but other communities, is something potential. So, but that's, that would take a while to formulate.
Thank you. Counselor Cook.
So as far as the interjurisdictional question that the mayor alluded to, Reese Hill is within the city's limits, that road, or it's a county road?
It is a county road. The urban growth boundary is along the north line of Reese Hill Road.
Okay, so the properties inside are within the urban growth boundary. Reese Hill itself is a county road. And with the improvements that are done on Lone Oak, because there are quite a few hills, the county would be responsible. Is that where the jurisdiction ends? You know, we've done our improvement and now here's this topographically challenged road that doesn't have any improvements. Is it again kicking the can? And with the local improvement district, is that something that, there might be some conflict between funding mechanisms between the county and the city? Would that, would this instance be something that would be supported cross jurisdictionally with a local improvement district? Or would this be something we wouldn't find as much support with? Sorry.
I'll do my best. Subdividing the questions. First question is, the city limits right now, that's in the west area, the...
West?
The west area, the orange area.
Oh, the orange one.
The Oak Ridge development is the only property in the city in that area. And then the property just south of that, which has the word area in it with the number, with the dollar amount, that is in annexation now and has a decision posted for, one of its many development requirement decisions has been issued and actually has been appealed. So those two are the two that are in city or soon to be in city. The one south of that, which is the last portion of the Lone Oak section, that is right now not in the city. I have spoken with that property owner a couple times, and there are conversations about if we can work out something to construct that. As of now, if it's in the county, a street construction permit would go through the county unless that is acquired and annexed. And if it's acquired and annexed, then the city would be in the permitting authority. So that's, I hope that answers your city limits questions.
Yes, the city limits, but still I see this conflict with the improvement districts.
A local improvement district would be very complicated interjurisdictionally. And I really, the timeframe of that would be quite lengthy. I can't really speak to how long it would take, but it would be quite lengthy. Probably in the matter of years, probably.
Counselor Case.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, just trying to figure out the order I want to ask them. I have to say, this is a convoluted narrative. I would love to see a timeline of events because I can't keep track of them in my head. And it's, the staff reports, I'm sorry to say, they're just not very clear. And this is the first staff report I've seen mention of this Phase 14, which is kind of a new thing. We didn't talk about this last time at all. So that was kind of new, but it's pretty confusing. I'd like to know specifically, if this reimbursement district was formed, what part of the improvement does it fund? Because in the staff report from last time, it says that the developer, in this case, we're talking about the Burns. The developer, August 11th, 2017, submitted an application to form a district for the construction of Lone Oak improvements. And the proposed reimbursement district includes completion of Lone Oak Road southeast construction from Muirfield Avenue to Reese Hill Road. So at a cost of $9.3 million, to me, that sounds like the whole kit and caboodle, right? The bridge, the road and everything. And then tonight I'm hearing, no, the reimbursement district would just fund the southern part of the Lone Oak Road improvements because if this Phase 14 happened with this other developer, they would be required to build the bridge and the northern portion of this. So it's terribly confusing. So I'd like to know, if this reimbursement district is formed, what exactly would it be funding?
Okay, thank you.
That's the first question.
At the time of the last presentation, the decision that was rendered for the Oak Ridge development required the construction that was to the north only. Now, that was amended here just a couple months ago. And as a result of this decision in January, it was, the amendment was published, giving them the option of doing it to the south as the construction component and paying a proportional share of the north. So as of right now, the decision that has been rendered, as of just a month ago, I think, was they need to construct to the south through Reese Hill and pay a proportional share toward the north. That's the current requirement. Does that answer your question?
Who rendered the decision?
Planning administrator.
We did? The council did? The planning administrator.
Planning administrator.
And that was done after the January 20-whatever council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I want to get to the issue.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I don't think we answered your question though, Counselor. So the reimbursement district is intended to fund what's in yellow, so both the north part and the south part.
Oh, thank you.
So, because I think that was your question, and I just want to make sure that we answered your question. So who's responsible for building what is a separate issue that I think Mr. Davis was addressing for you. But the reimbursement district and how it's laid out is to fund the bridge and the road improvement from the creek all the way down to Reese Hill Road.
And there's no order in which things have to be built?
There is no order.
So it's up to the discretion of the developer?
That is correct.
So if the Burns, for example, wanted to build the bridge, they could build just that piece? And that'd be, they'd be like, yep, good.
Well, recall that, and I think Mr. Davis talked about it earlier in his presentation. You know, council, when Mr. Frye came to see the council last year, council said, please figure out a way to solve this. So in conversations, another component to this is, so how do we solve the access issues? Because these two parcels to the south, you know, the Burnt property and the, what we call the Devon property, for lack of another name, the 10 acre and the 20 acre, need an access other than through Sahale and through Devon. So our anticipation and part of the planning administrator's decision is that the south piece would be required so that those 30 acres, that development, has a way out immediately, you know, when they develop, out to Reese Hill and then to Sunnyside and not have to go around through Sahale and Devon. So what we anticipate is, when those properties come in for development, the south piece would be constructed. So we would see that very early in the process. Then the north piece, which is the more expensive piece, would await other development or the generation of funds so that the bridge and that north piece could be built.
Okay. So that makes sense to me as far as the reimbursement district is covering all of the improvements from Muirfield to Reese Hill, but for Burnt development and those properties south, they're on the hook for that southern portion.
Right. And then they would have...
As a condition of their approval.
Correct. And then there was a question to Mr. Shipman. Those developers would have some entitlement for reimbursement, you know, from the reimbursement district for building those, you know, those pieces of the street.
I have another question, if I may.
Yes.
Which is what Mr. Frye brought up tonight as far as the MOU. And I remember seeing this MOU at some point, but I can't, I couldn't tell you specifically when, but I do remember seeing the MOU between the city and various other parties saying, yep, City of San, we're going to build that bridge. Don't worry about it. Now it's all confused and convoluted about what that MOU actually says and if it exists and all of that, so.
It does exist. When Phase 14 came in, there was this issue that we were trying to resolve. And we're trying to move forward the construction of this road. So what we promised in the MOU, and we have lived up to it, is that we would put at least $750,000 in the CIP, in transportation systems development charge funds. There's actually a million dollars, a million fifty dollars, a million fifty thousand dollars in an out year of the CIP. That was done at a time when our understanding is that building that facility was going to be about a million dollars. We have since learned that it is significantly more. The staff report from January 22 speaks to an SDC eligibility of almost $2 million. So we can certainly propose more money. And that would be, you know, SDCs are really developer fees. So that is, that can be a component to fund this and move the project forward. I mean, our intent is to figure out a way to get this thing constructed. So it's wholly appropriate to put money in the CIP. This council has adopted that project, I think, the last year, the last two years. But what it waits is, you know, there's no street to the south and, you know, there's no other connection. So the money is there three years from now for at least a portion of it. And that, you know, that agreement was done when, you know, we thought it was going to be a lot less. Now that we believe it's going to be a lot more, then there's a substantial gap in the construction funds for the bridge.
Okay, which leads into my final question, which is, why is there a culvert in Jory Creek right now?
Mr. Davis will...
And when did that start?
Mr. Davis will take over.
Why did it stop?
Let me answer that. The developer had in 2000, I believe it was 2006, had applied for a permit to construct the culvert. And it was in preparation for Phase 14, preparation for the Lone Oak Bridge construction. And then the, two things. One of them is the, that project was specifically designed as to not trigger any state and federal permitting. It was done outside the ordinary high water, and therefore there was no state, there was no trigger to get state and federal permits for that work. So that was done, that was the kind of, why the scope of work was what it was. And then the economy happened and the, that whole recession came, and then the project was stopped and that phase was dropped. And here we are. So that was the history that we know of.
Can you explain outside the high water?
The state and federal permitting is, generally speaking, is a permit to fill in the wetland
areas, a permit to fill in the ordinary high water of creeks. So it's called a wetland fill permit usually. So if you're not doing work in that, in the wet area of the creek, if you're spanning above it, there is no trigger, at least there was not in 2006. I'm not sure as much today. I believe it's still the same today. There's no trigger for a permit from the state and federal agencies.
So a culvert to go around the creek was not triggering permit with the water? Okay.
That was...
And that's state following the state guidelines?
Yes.
So I just want to really quick confirm the timeline there. So construction was started for in preparation as for Phase 14. And just to be clear, the person we're talking about, the developer, is Takarski or whoever?
Hawaii Northwest Ventures.
Hawaii Ventures, all right, thank you. Prep work for Phase 14, the economy tanked, he said, nope, not doing that. And then Phase 14 was halted, and then what? Then what happened?
And then...
Because that's not clear to me still.
In 2014, the applicant submitted a subdivision plan for that area, for Creekside 14, and it was a three-phase project. Phase one was the construction of three homes, and the condition of approval was the right-of-way being dedicated for the entire Lone Oak improvement. So with all the right-of-way for that, that yellow line was dedicated with the Creekside Phase 14, so Phase one. And then there were roughly 28 lots, there were the other two phases, and those are restricted until the Lone Oak Bridge is built. So no more development can happen on that. By the land use decision that came in 2014, no more development can be done on that, the next two phases, until the bridge and the road are built.
But at some point, at some point, the city or whoever approached who said, the City of San will build that bridge, you don't have to build that bridge as per the MOU. And I don't know when that was executed. But somewhere along the line, there was a decision made to say, hey, you started building this, but now you don't have to. We're going to build it.
You need to do it.
How did that come to be?
So it became clear, as there were fewer and fewer lots, that Hawaii Northwest Ventures, Larry Takarski, whoever the, you know, in whatever LLC and whatever context, you know, was, you know, there was never going to be enough money. We were never going to get to a bridge. So at the time, we're trying to figure out, the homeowners association has expressed a concern, has actually appealed that decision. And we're trying to figure out, well, how can we, you know, can we build this, can we assist in moving this forward? And in using systems development charges, you know, that's an appropriate use of, you know, developer-funded money to put the road in, so to put the bridge in. So at the time that that MOU was agreed to, again, we thought that that was around a million dollars. In fact, the MOU speaks to putting in at least $750,000 because that's about what we thought. So we proposed a million. A million is still in there. So that was the thought process is, can we just get this thing done? Can we get this thing built? It's now that it's significantly more expensive, there's now more development pressure because, you know, the Burns have this requirement and then the Devon property will have this requirement. And, you know, nobody can afford these kinds of things. And that's why the reimbursement district comes to bear, so that can we put it together with development money to build the facility?
Okay, I just wanted to summarize just so I understand, and then I'll pass it off to whoever. But essentially, the developer for Phase 14, there wasn't enough land essentially to make enough money off of to actually make the project worth it. The bridge at the time was only supposed to be a million-ish dollars. The economy tanked, that wasn't worth it. In the last 10 years, the cost of the bridge has gone significantly up and for other reasons. And that is why, that's why we're in the situation we are now then. That's what it sounds like.
That is correct.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I have a few questions. The first one is relates to SDCs. So in addition to the reimbursement district fees that are proposed here, there would also be for each individual development SDC funds for transportation that would be over and above the reimbursement district amounts?
Yes, so the 9.3 million, roughly 2 million were subtracted that were SDC funds.
Okay, so, okay, so you've already calculated that, and that's brought the 9 million down to the 7 million that you're now talking about. So, okay. Next question is, how did we move from a culvert to a bridge? I mean, in 2007, a culvert was just fine. And now we're being told, well, we need to build a bridge because of environmental and other things that may or may not happen, as I understand it, because that depends on state and federal approval. So if that's the case, that... So if that's the case, that the culvert has now morphed into a bridge because we're worried about the state and the feds would say if it was just a culvert, why haven't we talked to the state and the feds to see what they would say?
There's a couple of questions there.
Yes, there are.
The first one is that the, the, the applicant, to my knowledge, never made application to the state and federal agencies for the culvert. That was always, that was done because it didn't trigger the permit. So we don't, as of now, have an answer as to what would be required.
So what you're, excuse me, Mr. Davis, but what you're telling us is that, in effect, the developer just went ahead and said, "Let's put in a culvert, then we'll fly under the radar and not let the state and feds know?"
I mean, that's a matter of opinion, you-
Oh, that was my opinion.
The, the, the regulation was not triggered, so they did not, they did not warrant the permit.
And if we still use the culvert now, the regulations would not be triggered?
To my understanding, more culvert construction, I believe, is gonna go beyond that, that non-permitted area, so I believe any more construction requires a permit, and that's part of why it's stopped.
Even with the culvert?
Because it, to build more culvert, my understanding is, needs to go into that permitted area that you need to get the permit to do the work.
Okay, so, so you're saying it's your current belief that a culvert could never be built there? It has to be a bridge?
In estimating, and I guess, in a responsible estimate, in our opinion, we're estimating the bridge cost because that's a likely scenario, but it's not, until someone that makes application, we don't know.
So in other words, you cannot get any kind of advisory opinion from either the state or the feds as to whether or not the culvert would in fact be sufficient, or whether or not because of various regulations, it would have to morph into a bridge?
There'd be substantial design work to get to the point to get an answer.
Okay, now.
That makes no sense. You told us that there wasn't any committee needed in 2006, and as far as you knew, there still wasn't in 2015, and now you're saying, "Well, we think there might be, but we won't know until we start doing it whether we have to get a permit or not." And so, I mean, when I get an answer to the question-
Yeah, I think it's important to clarify, so, so the city doesn't own that culvert, the city doesn't own that land, so the developer's representatives, the developer's engineer started that work, placed those culverts, to our knowledge, did not engage the permitting agencies, so, so, and, and I guess if he wanted to build, if the developer wanted to build that, that culvert, you know, basically put in the walls and fill that in and put in that kind of facility, he could pursue that. When we signed the MOU and deposited the million dollars, and our engineers looked at it, our engineers said, "Hey, we don't think this is such a good design, we think there's some environmental issues, we think there's some permitting issues, we think a bridge may be a better solution given all of these issues." So, so that's where it comes from. Now, the other part that Mr. Davis speaks about, there is no such thing as an advisory opinion from state and federal permitting agencies, they want to see 30%, 50%, 60%, whatever percent plans, to react to it, and these things change all the time. We could pick up the phone and say, "Is this okay?" We may get an answer that it's, that the culvert is okay, and when we submit design plans, they may say, "We're not issuing a permit," because advisory decisions, advisory opinions on it mean nothing to the permitting agencies. So, so that is, that is our, that is our experience with permitting agencies, is we need to, we need to figure out a design, get it to a level to then be able to pull a permit.
I guess my question then would be, why didn't the city engineer look at that thing before you went down this road and have an opinion on it?
The culvert?
Yes.
Because-
Just that whole, that the site.
That is, because the developer was gonna do it. That is private property, he was gonna build it and then dedicate it to the city, we didn't have to look at it. It was all of his own volition.
And I guess my next question is, why would we take a bridge that was built without our engineers looking at it and taking it in and then go, "We're stuck with another lemon?"
He started, Mr. Davis can correct me, but I believe he simply plopped those culverts in to begin the work. Did we ever issue a permit? I don't-
There was a, there was a city culvert permit that just approved the sizing, approved the sizing to make sure the water can flow appropriately under it.
So, so the culvert, but not, but not the bridge? Not the roadway piece of that?
Counselor Cook.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, I, I have more-
You gotta get charter answers out of these people.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying not to ask leading questions, I do have, I may have more, but I have a follow-up to the specific question, and then I'm happy to-
Why don't you go ahead then, Tom?
So my question is, when the city agrees that if the developer of parcel 14 or Phase 14 will give us the right-of-way, we will build the bridge, and then the city says, "We are gonna factor in the cost of $1 million to the bridge," and now the engineers say it's gonna cost more than $1 million, why couldn't the city engineers have figured that out at the time of the MOU and said, "A million's not enough, we better put in 2 million, 3 million, 4 million"?
Right, because at the time the MOU was decided, we, I did not engage the engineers, I simply, you know, the information that I had in front of me was, "Hey, this is about a million-dollar project, okay, well, hey, a million dollars in transportation and SDCs is really not that difficult a funding mechanism." So it was after that that we put it in the CIP, that engineers start to put pencil, our engineers start to put pencil to paper and go, "Hey, wait a minute, this is a lot more than a million dollars."
So when you say you did not engage the engineers, you mean you did not engage the engineers for Tokarski?
No, 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 the engineers for Tokarski said, that was their opinion, that this was a million-dollar facility.
And then you did not engage-
The engineers for the City of Salem, my staff, when they then took it and said, and started noodling on it, said, "Hey, this is gonna be a lot more." We don't know that this idea of, of putting in retaining walls and filling it in to put a road on top of it is a good idea, we think a bridge is a better idea, and this bridge is a lot more expensive.
Why did not the city engineers look at that at the time you agreed that you would build the bridge for a million dollars?
Because I did not ask them to. We are engaged in conversations about this issue, the HOA, we're in negotiations because there's a Luba appeal, and we basically took Tokarski's engineers' word for it, that this was a million dollar, that's what had been on the table, that's what had been bandied about, and we said, "Hey, we can afford, we can do a million dollars."
Okay, Counselor Cook.
Thank you, I see an opportunity to clarify some policy here, so Peter, I have a couple of questions, whoever wants to take a swing at here. So when a permit is issued, what follow-up process is there to make sure that someone adheres to it? Is it complaint-driven? If with these particular culverts on private property, the permit that was issued for them, there was no follow-up with that once they got it?
I can speak to that. The, when the city issues a permit like that, there's an inspection process to make sure the construction conforms to the plans that were designed.
Before?
As, as part of the, but there's a plan review process before that, and the plan review process does assure that the regulations have been met, and so in the plan review process, the engineer demonstrates that they have not met any of the federal or state triggers for federal permitting, so they, they, they can, they are able to demonstrate that it meets the regulations, so therefore, they have adequate flow, they get constructed safely, and they meet all regulations, so the permit's issued.
Is that done on-site, or is that done before in actual involvement with the site?
It's, it's done before any construction.
Before any construction.
It's a plan review process that we have, that we do for any, any public improvement goes through that plan review process.
But after that process, what happens on-site to make sure that what was permitted is followed through and happens?
City inspectors go through and visit the site regularly to make sure that the construction's appropriate.
And you'd said that this is private land, so responsibility of the land over, but what responsibility did the city have as far as obligation with the water? Because this is still city property that the creek is running through, so who has care of that water?
The waters of the state, and the, why a permit was triggered by the city is it's a stormwater conveyance, a public conveyance system, and so we issue a permit to ensure that the conveyance is still appropriate. So that is a city permit that's done through our Chapter 77 permitting process.
Are you asking, Counselor, are there other permits required besides the city's? As he said, it's a conveyance permit, DSL would come in if it's waters of the state, I mean, we have other, other players here.
Well, I guess I'm a little confused because it, I think when we were first talking about this, there was this outside the high-water mark, that this was done so that no permit would be-
But you're just asking about the bridge, do we need a bridge? Is that your question? I'm not sure I understand what you're asking him now. Where are we going here?
Well, I'd love to be able to continue.
Well, tell me where we're headed, I wanna, I wanna understand how it fits into this discussion of a reimbursement district now.
Of course, well, I think-
It's getting late.
I understand, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna make sure that I have the right information, and I think I have time and the responsibility to ask the question.
If it's, if it has to do with the reimbursement district, yeah. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Counselor McCoy.
So one of the reasons, a couple of things here, Glenn, first, if the, my understanding is we need the road gray in the bridge, or we're pursuing this because it's an Assalem transportation plan, and it's a needed second access road up into that area, so we have two ways in and two ways out, is that one of the reasons it's in the plan and was developed?
It's a collector's street that provides north-south connection to the site, yeah.
So now, what happens, so you need two ways in and two ways out, so what happens if we don't approve this? Those developers still build the road south to Reese Hill, you now have two ways in and two ways out? That situation goes away to some degree, and it doesn't matter if we build that bridge and the road down there, since it's not gonna be developed anyway, since, I don't think? Is that a practical, I mean, is that an accurate depiction of what could happen?
Neighbors have shown concern about that Reese Hill is maybe not an ideal road for a lot of more traffic, some people have said, so that north-south connection would provide a good, another access into town, that would be appropriate for connectivity, so it is, it is something that is, that is warranted. There is a scenario that, that if the applicant could reapply, and they could ask to connect south, and they could just turn their backs to the bridge, and that's something, but that's not before us today, so.
No, well, isn't that one of their reasons for approval for the Oak Ridge one? They could, they have to build the road to the south? Or is that tied in with the, is that tied in with the reimbursement district?
The requirement is to construct the road to the south and also contribute toward the north.
If and when it's built?
Just as a reimbursement, as part of the reimbursement district, because the reimbursement had been formed.
It's part of the reimbursement district, well.
It had been formed when the decision was rendered.
If we didn't do this, would an option be to change the Assalem transportation plan to take this road out of the plan?
Take the road out?
Or are we stuck with that for life?
Counselor McCoy, can you use your microphone?
Oh, sorry. Counselor, we, I mean, the council can amend a transportation plan, I don't know why we would amend the transportation plan to eliminate a connection. I mean, envision, I mean, it, I think it's, it's easy to envision what's there today, which is a very, you know, very rural, ex-urban kind of place, envision all of that west, central, and east area fully developed with no other way out than to, I mean, I guess there's some connections to the west, but mostly it'd be Reese Hill to Sunnyside Road. And that's a lot of traffic with just one way, you know, in essence, one way in and out heading in that direction, so I, I don't know that we would ever, I mean, however this is funded or not funded, or built or not built, you know, good planning with, good transportation planning would indicate that we need that Lone Oak Road to have, to have this other way in and out of that, of that area.
So if we didn't have this transfer, this reimbursement district, assuming it stays in, I'm assuming then the only other way to get this built would be the next streets and bond issue, you put it in there, and then the taxpayers of the city pay for it?
I, I would believe that ultimately that's what we would be looking at. That at some point, the pressure, the, the, the development south of Sahale would, would be enough that at some point, the pressure would build enough that we, the city would have to figure out how to put in, how to put in that bridge, and, and, you know, if the road, if the road wasn't built, because, you know, in the mornings and in the afternoons, everybody would be stuck at Sunnyside at Reese Hill.
Okay, Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, I'd like just a follow-up on the bond measure idea. Assuming that there's a, that this district goes through, it will be decades before this is completely built out, and the money would be available in the reimbursement district. It's my understanding, the purpose of the bond measure isn't to make the public pay for it, but to get it done sooner, to make this area more attractive, more developable, and thus increasing, I mean, decrease the time that it would get done and be, the reimbursement district would be repaid.
Right, but what I said at the January 22 meeting is that it would make sense to me to recommend to the council that once the reimbursement district had 50, 60% of the proceeds, if we were looking at a, at a streets bond, that it would make sense to put in a $5 million item, a $4 million item, in a $100 million, what would probably be a $100, $150 million bond, to get it done, because we'd have money leveraged against it, and then the remainder would, once, once it was bonded, we would continue the reimbursement district to repay, you know, the bond with, with those money. So it wouldn't be a forgiveness for the remainder, it would simply be a way of leveraging the reimbursement district money. The council wouldn't have to do it, we could just wait, it would just seem that at some point, we would just want the bridge and not necessarily wait out the 20 years.
If I could, I, I wanna make sure that in, in the long run, citizens won't be paying for this, the reimbursement district will, and when it, in essence, pays back that bond money that was used to build it, that bond money would be used for something else, which, which makes sense to me. My only question is, how do you explain that in a bond measure?
I, I don't know.
That'd be an interesting camp-
I don't know, that'd be, that'd be a campaign question.
House or Nankie?
Yeah, just to kind of follow up on that, we did that. We did that on Madrona, because the Fairview property was supposed to provide that improvement as they developed, and they didn't, and so we used bond measure, bond money to build that from the last streets and bridges bond, and when they develop, they have to give us that $5 million still, and that will go to another transportation project. So we have precedent in that area.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. If the bridge would have been built by the Creekside Development or whenever the various Tokarski LLCs and corporations, would the people on the south end of Lone Oak Road, would they have to have, as that area developed, would they be making contributions to the building of that bridge in some sort of reimbursement to Mr. Tokarski?
If, if Mr. Tokarski had built, he would have probably built the northerly part.
Yeah, yeah.
If he had built that and filed for reimbursement district, he could have filed one that's very similar to what you see today, and been getting reimbursement for a portion of, probably less money than you see now, though.
Okay, well, the rationale for that reimbursement district would have been, "I built this bridge that is benefiting the people down at the south end of Lone Oak Road, and so they should somehow pay for the bridge?"
Yeah, because if the Oak Ridge property had been benefited by Tokarski's group's bridge construction, it would be appropriate that he would, they would, they would pay some fee.
And even without a reimbursement district, would that happen, or would have to be reimbursement?
Have to be reimbursement district.
Okay, now, as I look at the way it's, I understand it now with the amendment to the Oak Ridge property, that, it was, an aside, was this what we did last council meeting, or was it a council meeting before then? I'm looking at Mr. Wright, did that happen then? Was that what we did last, last council meeting?
Yes, the information reported that you referenced and asked about at the last meeting-
Was this?
Yes.
Just a correction, that was two meetings ago, the, the one you had last meeting was the Devon property.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, but I mean, they're all tied up in this a little bit, which is another, where, where's the timeline? But the way I look at it, with the amendments that we made two meetings ago, the practical effect of that is, if we approve this now, the Burns are gonna build the south end of Lone Oak Road, and the developer of Phase 14 is never gonna develop anything, because his development would trigger the need to have the bridge- his development would trigger the need to have the bridge built. So if that's the case, that goes back to a question I asked Mr. Shipman, because Mr. Shipman said, even if they're within this reimbursement district, and if Phase 14 decides we're going to start developing the other 28 properties, his view was that that would kick in, Phase 14's developers need to build the bridge alone and not, in addition to the reimbursement district.
Okay, I think there's a question. Let me try to answer.
There was a question.
So the, and I hope I get it. So the first two properties, the Oak Ridge property and the Devon property, are approximately 120 lots.
Yeah.
And if it's a $10,000 a lot, then you're looking at $1.2 million of reimbursement district fees, pretty close, probably just slightly under, but pretty close to the construction cost of that road.
Yes.
So that, those two projects with that improvement more or less are a wash.
Yeah.
We expect. So then the other fees that come in from the other developments, now that that critical connection's made, then the other properties would then be really funding, all that money would be going toward the bridge most likely.
So if Takarsky decides to fund the 28 properties that are in development, 14 or Phase 14, would he be responsible for building the bridge and the other reimbursement fees would be reimbursed to him for his building the bridge? Or did our MOU obviate that?
He, by this reimbursement district, he is eligible for the eligible costs. Well, he would be eligible for reimbursement. He would be also subject to the fee. So he would be paying 9212 per lot.
Well, no, I understand that. But who's paying for the bridge? Is he paying for the bridge? Or are we paying for the bridge subject to the reimbursement fees?
He cannot plat until the bridge is built. It's a plat requirement. So the fact that the city has funded SDC monies for reimbursement, he still cannot develop and plat until the bridge is built. So it is his requirement, but the city has agreed to put money in the budget to give some SDC-
Of $1 million?
Yes.
So he cannot build until the, build, the bridge is built, but the bridge will be built with city monies subject to the reimbursement fees?
The, he can't plat until it's built. So whether he builds it or the city builds it, he still cannot plat until it's built. It has to be built by somebody.
Okay, well, who's, if he says, comes in with the plat and says, I want to plat this development, and the city says, you cannot plat until the bridge is built, who pays for the bridge?
Who builds it?
If he builds it, he gets reimbursement district fees back.
Okay.
If the city budgets it and decides to build it as part of the CFP program, then the city could pay for it as CFP funds. But he can't plat until, so the likely scenario is that he would build it because he's waiting for it, and the city would give him the SDC monies back in reimbursement. So he would, we expect he would build it.
Even with the, if we approve the reimbursement district, I want to make sure I get this clear. If we approve the reimbursement district tonight, what'll happen is the south end of Lone Oak will be built. We discussed that. And the north end of Lone Oak will not be built until and when Mr. Takarsky or his company says, we want to plat Phase 4. And at that point, the city could say, you build it.
Or when we want to build it.
Yes. Or the city could say, sure, we'll do a bond measure.
Right. Or, or other areas develop, money builds up in the pot, and there's enough money in the pot for the city to say, we're ready to build it.
Yeah.
With the money that's in the pot.
The money in the pot is going to come from the reimbursement district.
Correct, correct, correct. And from the SDCs. Right.
Anybody else? Counselor McCoy?
Final one. So in past reimbursement districts, is this unusual because it's outside the city?
No, there have been some that have been in and outside the city. That's not what's making this unusual. What's unusual is the size of it. It's larger than most other ones have been. It's the largest one so far.
Counselor Kaser.
Thank you. I just wanted to address some of the concerns that were raised by some of the public testimony, and that is concerning, to me especially, the east area. There were some comments made about why that area is included in the reimbursement district because I would assume they would take Sunnyside Road, I think somebody said, to get into town. They're not going to be going west and then up. They would just be going to that, you know, major road.
Counselor, is your question then what traffic patterns look like out there to justify it?
No, my question is, why is the east area in the reimbursement district? Why was that chosen as being in the reimbursement district?
What's the benefit description?
What's the benefit? Because logically, they wouldn't go that way.
Well, I don't know what they do. I want him to answer your question.
I mean, if I lived there, I wouldn't drive that way.
You're in deliberations now. So why don't we let him answer the question?
So I'd like to know why that was chosen, that area, the east area was chosen.
I'll explain. The lots that front Sunnyside Road were removed because they take direct access from Sunnyside Road. The, from our basic traffic patterns, when, once developers come out to, or once owners, property owners, travelers come out to Reese Hill Road, they have various options. There are a lot of amenities that are northwest that, is our expectation from traffic expertise that they will be going both directions, and many will be going north. So we've established this one quarter responsibility. We don't have a detailed traffic study to defend that. That's not part of this process. But it was a rough estimate based on our knowledge of traffic flow.
I think I can just add, so was the area south of Reese Hill Road not included because it's not in the UGB?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, Mr. Shipman, you can rebut.
I think I should have brushed up on the MOU before I came tonight, and I apologize for that. Mayor, I have nothing further to add. I feel this has been thoroughly hashed out.
Do you want to deliberate and make a decision tonight or not?
Yeah.
Then we'll close the hearing, and then let's make a motion to continue deliberations at a date certain, whether it's April 9 or April 17.
Okay. I'm going to close this public hearing. The chair is going to move that we postpone deliberations for two meetings, and we'll bring this back up. Okay? I need a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Counselor McCoy. Any discussion? I think we've heard quite a bit, and I've just got a lot to think about on this. I think we've heard a lot of information, and I would like to take some time. This is a legislative process. You can talk to anybody you want. So nothing is confining you from hunting people down and asking them questions or reading all the newspaper opinions you want or anything else. And we'll come back in a couple of meetings, and we'll be all fresh and well-informed. We'll know all about this, and we'll vote.
Our head won't hurt or something?
And our heads won't hurt, yes. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I'm going to support the motion, and I might have made a similar motion because, believe it or not, I have some more questions that, you know, we're running out of time here. We've been here a long time. So I will probably be submitting some additional questions in writing to the staff to get their response to.
Ah.
Now, can I do that or not?
That might be a little tricky.
Unless the attorney.
So at this late hour, I hate to give a lesson on land use, but this is not a land use decision.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily a legislative decision. It kind of involves an applicant, so quasi-judicial rights would apply. So there is no statutory rule against second-party contacts, but you should, you know, keep that in mind. You're welcome to submit, you know, questions to staff during deliberations. You can also ask questions to staff, but staff really can't bring in new evidence.
Yeah.
So just the evidence that's been submitted to you tonight is what they can base their questions on.
It would not be new evidence. It would just be, I had about six questions and maybe three of them got answered. I'm fully aware of that, and I suppose if we postpone the hearings, I could ask them at that point in staff when the, because we will still have-
As part of deliberations, you can ask questions.
Yeah, and so I was just trying to give staff a little heads up. I don't care if they answer those questions, but in writing before the meeting, but at the meeting, I'd like to hear some answer. And if Mr. City Attorney, you believe that any of my questions have new facts, then I am happy to abide with your decision that the staff cannot give an answer at that point for various reasons.
Our answers have to be limited to what's in the record.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further?
We would prefer, Mayor, as staff, if they come in writing ahead of time so we can lay them out, lay out the response, and provide them to council in a timely manner.
Okay. Counselor Kaser.
I'd like to make sure that the Neighborhood Association and all the affected property owners are going to be notified about the deliberations going forward and the date.
Date will be April 23.
That they'll be written notification.
I see representatives of the Neighborhood Association, they're on notice.
But that will have written, sent, mailed notification to those people?
Counselor Kaser, that's not required when we continue a hearing, but if you wanted to make a motion or if we wanted to include that?
I would make a motion that written notification be sent to all affected property owners for this deliberation. Second, and the Neighborhood Association.
We'll consider that amendment to the main motion.
No. No, it's a separate motion.
Well, we can't, no.
We already have a motion on the floor.
We can vote on that motion first and go back to the main motion then.
Okay. Got a second?
Yes.
Second.
Cook.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Back to the main motion.
Deliberations in two weeks.
Twenty-third.
Two meetings.
April 23.
I thought it was two weeks. I remember. Go ahead.
April 23. Well, if you're going to send out notice, you're going to try to notify a lot of people. We ought to give them a little time to do it.
That's right.
Okay?
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion passes. We're on to information, oops, special, no, we don't have any special areas of business. Information reports.
You should have pulled the information and wore it up. It's going to be a level.
Anything on information reports? Counselor Anderson?
Mr. Wright and I had a discussion this afternoon about Item 6C, which is the development in West Salem, the, I think it's a 322-unit apartment complex. And it's a very complex thing. Ha ha, complex, complex. And I wonder if you could let the council know exactly why this is in front of us and for what areas are we even getting an information report as opposed to things being decided by the planning commission? And why it even was in front of the planning commission?
Certainly. So with regard to why this is here before you on the agenda, this particular case has a tree regulation variance that is part of the overall packet and part of the overall case. And so any instance of a tree variance by procedure comes before this board for, as an information report. All the other aspects of this case related to its density and its use are by right pieces of this particular case. And so when it's by right, that means that those are things that are entitled already to the property. So the pieces that went to the planning commission include everything regarding the driveway approach, the tree variance itself, the design standards that are aspect of multifamily construction. But again, for the sake of this information report being on your agenda, what triggered that was the tree variance itself.
So any of the conditions of that development, they're not subject to review at this point or never by the council. I mean, it went through the planning commission, the planning commission made the decision.
Well, the planning commission did make their decision. But if the council did choose to call up the case, then all the aspects of the case could be reviewed.
Okay.
So that's a bit of new information from our last conversation.
Okay.
But again, the reason why it is on the agenda to begin with is because of the tree variance.
Okay. Okay. Then unless somebody else has a question, I have one other question on another item. Another item.
I've got a question on this one.
On this item?
Yeah. So my question was, in reviewing the application, there's fencing all the way around this apartment complex. And what's perplexing to me is there's fence between the apartment complex and the park. And so to get to the park from the apartment complex, you'd actually have to walk out onto the road and then down another one, and then all the way around to get into the park. And I'm just curious as to why, why we're requiring a fence between an apartment complex and a park? It seems totally counterintuitive. I want to get to the park and I can't. And I'm wondering, is that a condition that we put on that apartment complex? Or is that a condition the developer wanted? But it seems, it seems unneeded, a burden or a barrier that's not-
Yeah. So there's a distinction between certainly, as you're mentioning, what is required by staff as a condition of the approval versus what is allowed by the policy and that the developer can then install in this case. The fence is something that is allowed by the design standards, and so it is a choice of that developer in this instance to have something like that. Whether it presents a practical difficulty to the residents is something that that developer would have to consider as a part of their design. But it did meet the design standards as reviewed by the planning commission.
So that wasn't a condition we put on?
I don't believe so. I would definitely invite Lisa to correct me if I'm wrong.
Hi, Lisa Anderson O'Leary. Actually, I think that is a condition number 10, and that's because of the zoning of the park. So this is multifamily land. Whenever it abuts single-family zone property, it requires a six-foot tall fence. The developer didn't ask to get out of that condition, so it applies.
But what about when it abuts a park?
The park is zoned for residential.
Single family?
Right.
Well, the park is zoned single family.
It is. Residential agriculture. Parks are allowed in pretty much every zone, so there's not necessarily incentive to change the zoning when a park goes in.
That seems really odd.
That we allow parks everywhere?
No, no, no. I mean, to have a fence between you and a park, and then you have to walk like quite a while, quite a ways, over 1,000 feet or quarter mile to-
There could have been maybe a path through there. The fence didn't have to go necessarily the entire way. There's nothing that would preclude an opening. The park is pretty wooded, and it doesn't have any trails that go to the property line. So, and park staff didn't request that kind of connectivity, so we didn't require it.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions? All righty.
Yeah. Ms. Mayor, I did have one on a different issue. Again, it's with Mr. Wright, and that's with the conditional use application found in 6B. And I have to say, I was afraid this was going to happen when we did the Airbnb by another name ordinance. It says a conditional use application for short-term rental use in a single-family dwelling. Is that what we are now calling the Airbnb ordinance?
Well, a short-term rental could be something that is marketed through Airbnb or some other, online, right?
The functional equivalent of an Airbnb.
Right. But the reason why the conditional use permit is required in this instance is because that property will be intended to be used exclusively for short-term rentals. It won't be a single-family home where the short-term rental is an ancillary use, like for, say, one of the bedrooms. So since this would be effectively a full-time, short-term rental use of the property, that's why the conditional use is required.
And the condition was that it could only be used for one, I don't know if family's the right word, but I don't know what else you would call it, but it couldn't be-
Right. That's correct. For one quote-unquote family, we'll say, no more than six people.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other business, so we are adjourned.